Tuesday, September 6th at 6:30 PM, roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Ask.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nature under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as presented?
Yes.
Councilmember Butterfield.
I see on here that we're not continuing the public hearing, so I would like to continue the public hearing for the assessments for all the street construction projects.
Okay, so we have it as an agenda item to talk about the consideration of the adoption of the assessment rule as item number nine.
Yes.
Are you asking to have an item 21 added then, is that what you're asking?
To be able to let people contest it more. From my understanding, the way it's written, we're just going to be adopting the rule with recommendations. We were missing people last time that wanted to object, and it was my belief we continue the meeting until this day so people could bring up their concerns.
Where would you like that added on the agenda, and how would you like the agenda amended?
Right after number eight, right before number nine.
So what do you want in the call?
To continue the whole assessment hearing so people can voice their concerns at the rate they're getting charged on the street projects throughout Wilmer.
Mayor, members of the council, I had worked with staff and the consultant engineer on plans for tonight's meeting, given that the assessment hearing was continued at the last meeting. And my advice to the group was that the city council should pick up where it left off at the last meeting. At the last meeting, the public comment, public testimony portion of the hearing had been closed, and the matter was brought to the council table for deliberation on what the city should do, both with respect to the specific property owners that objected and to the broader question of whether to adopt the assessment role as proposed. So my advice to the council tonight would be to, when that agenda item comes up, pick up the council's discussion where it left off. I know that the consultant engineer has prepared detailed responses to the objections that were made, and then the city council would still have the ultimate question whether to adopt the assessment role as proposed or direct the changes to it to be made. So that was my advice to staff in preparing the agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion been made in second to approve the agenda as presented. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
I also wanted to have a discussion about the agenda.
Go ahead.
Okay. It was my intent with the motion that was made last time that we would be continuing the hearing, which included the public hearing with that. So I am too asking for that to be continued. If that is not the case, then I would make a motion to remove this from the agenda because, in my mind, we haven't gotten enough information to explain to us why the assessment amounts have changed so dramatically that we need some additional time to review before we approve the assessment. So if we're not going to be allowed to open the public portion of it again to continue, then I would ask for the item to be removed, item number nine, to be removed from the agenda.
Are you making that as an addendum to the motion that's on the table?
I didn't think you were recognizing the motion on the table. You asked for the agenda to be approved.
I asked for the agenda to be approved. There was a motion to approve it as presented, and it was seconded, and then you spoke.
But you were not recognizing Councilmember Butterfield's request to have it.
There was not a second to it.
And then I'll second his. I didn't realize that you were waiting for a second.
Motion made. At this point, it would be an amendment to the motion on the table, correct?
That is correct. That is correct, but I think there should be some clarification on what the amendment is because there were alternatives suggested. The main amendment, it sounded like, was to add a public hearing component to agenda item number nine.
That was the one that Councilmember Butterfield said. Councilmember Nelson just said that if that is not being recognized, she's introducing a motion to remove item number nine.
If you were waiting for a second, I will offer that second to his request.
Looking for legal staff.
I think the question is really just for the maker of the motion to amend the motion on the table to approve the agenda as presented, whether the requested amendment at this stage is to add a public hearing component or to remove item number nine altogether.
Maker of the motion was Councilmember Fagerly. Councilmember Fagerly.
I'll make that motion to continue the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
A motion passes. Consent items.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval the city council minutes of August 15th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of August 22nd, special city council minutes of August 29th, convention and visitor bureau minutes of June 21st, airport commission minutes of July 20th, council payable report for August 6 through August 29, consider an application to connect excluded bingo by Church of St. Mary, consider an application for exempt permit from the Knights of Columbus, consider a municipal-owned property event with an on-sale liquor license holder, Green Mill, Wilmer, consider a temporary on-sale liquor license for Foxhole Brew House, reset the public hearing for the sale of city-owned property for September 19th at or after 6:30 PM for Wilmer Poultry, reset the public hearing for Unique Opportunities Property rezoned from Ag to R5 for September 19th at or after 6:30 PM. For council's information, we have application for appointment to the airport commission of John Hafner and an application for appointment to the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission of John Kennedy.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I did not find information for the appointment of John Kennedy to the municipal utilities in our packet.
Can we email it out to council so that we can act on it for next meeting?
Yes.
Would you like that item removed then?
Um, yes.
Remove the application appointment to Wilmer Municipal Utilities John Kennedy. Just go. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. We don't have to act on that John Kennedy, right?
No.
Okay. Next, we have open forum. We have two individuals who have asked to speak. The city of Wilmer has a open forum process of three minutes. The total time allotted for the open forum is 15 minutes. So if you are going to speak to an item, and there's more than one individual speaking to the same subject, only three people can speak to the same subject, not to exceed nine minutes of the 15-minute timeline. At this time, we only have two people who have asked to speak to the public or speak to the council. The first one is Mr. Jason Butler, and he wants to talk to the council on easement. Mr. Butler. Again, you'll have three minutes. We have a timer that's up, and there'll be a little noise over there that happens so that you know that your time is up. If you're in the middle of a sentence, finish that sentence or thought, but don't start a new thought or else I'll interrupt you. Mr. Butler, go ahead.
My name is Jason Butler, owner of Cityline Towing. We have the property 124 Benson Avenue Southwest. We are under contract for the other property on the other side of the bridge, which is known as the Ides Building, Ides Refrigeration. I'd like to request an easement underneath the bridge between the two properties for our impound lot. Our property already extends underneath the bridge, roughly 75 feet by 125 foot. We would put up a solid, nice, clean fence on both sides. We would use it basically for overflow for our impound lot. It's really not maintained now. I mean, there's a lot of riffraff there. It's solid on both sides. We would maintain it underneath the bridge. Just wanted to get the ball rolling, and hopefully, if you guys do allow it, we could do it before it freezes.
Okay, are you working with city staff on that?
Bring your attention on to the next step.
We'll get in touch with Ms. Valiant, and she'll probably direct you over to our planning department. So, thank you. Appreciate it. Next, we have Mr. Tom Jones, and he would like to speak on the assessment. Now, Mr. Jones, the council did open up. The council took action.
Yes.
Against the recommendation of the city attorney and staff and myself, and so they will be opening that process back up. Do you still want to speak now, or do you want to speak during that process?
I just had a quick question, so...
Well, we won't give you an answer here, but during the assessment period, we may.
Okay, okay. Yeah, you know what? I could probably just...
If it's to do with assessments, it might be in your best interest. Okay. How do I do this, Robert?
In light of the council action at the beginning of the meeting, I believe the appropriate action would be to reopen the public comment portion of the assessment hearing and begin taking testimony from anyone interested in the audience.
I guess my question more, do we go through the whole process like we did last time? Or do we just pick it up? I mean, I think they said they want the whole process open, so don't we have to go back to the whole, the whole public presentation because we have other people that might be here and weren't at the last meeting?
I think it's in your discretion. If you think the audience would benefit from at least a brief summary of the assessment process and the proposed assessments, you could certainly start with that.
Okay. At the order of the council, the mayor has veto authority on motions of the council, but the mayor does not get the opportunity to use his veto in this case because the council is trumping the city charter where it gives the mayor the option of vetoing inaction of the council. So the mayor will have no option to veto this because the council has exceeded the mayor's authority here. I don't know of any city where this has ever been done before, but I guess I'm opening the public hearing. So Jared, you want to make your presentation?
Okay.
Abbreviated presentation. I do not have the PowerPoint that was presented at the August 15th meeting on a screen, so I can run through the, through the information, at least provide a summary of the information that was presented at the...
Just a minute. So Attorney Scott, on the consent items, because we didn't have an application for an appointment to Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission, we wouldn't act on that as a council, but yet we don't have the full presentation for the public hearing, but we're going to go ahead with that. The appointment to the commission, this is a very simple action that, before I was mayor, was just brought to the council at the very meeting that that was approved. I have allotted and allowed the council to have additional information on it, and we wouldn't forward that tonight, but yet we're going to forward something as important as the assessment process? This seems to be a good question.
Mayor, members of the council, from a legal perspective, this is a continuation of a hearing that has already been commenced. The record of the hearing includes everything that happened at the previous meeting three weeks ago, combined with anything that will happen tonight. The council's action at the beginning of the meeting was to reopen the public comment portion. I don't, there's no legal deficiency in continuing down that path tonight. If the council wishes to bring this back at a future meeting, it, of course, has the ability to continue the hearing again. I think staff would benefit from direction on exactly how that continued hearing should unfold in the council's view, if that's the direction the council wants to go. But legally, there's no reason this hearing cannot be continued, the council can't continue with this hearing today.
All right, Mayor, council. So essentially, the project area is split up into two types of construction. One is reconstruction, and one is overlay. The reconstruction areas, just for reference, 13th Street Southwest, Litchfield Avenue Southwest, Sixth Street Southwest, 17th Avenue Southwest, and then Charlotte Street, along with Industrial Drive on the west side of town. So those are the reconstruction areas. The overlay areas were 19th Street and Lakeland, as well as 7th Street or County Road 41. So as the project cost came in, the breakdown of the total project cost, street reconstruction is approximately 3.8 million, sanitary sewer, approximately 1.1 million, water main, similarly 1.1 million, storm sewer, 793,000, and mill and overlay of approximately 2.2 million, for an overall total project cost of $9,215,699.61. The breakdown of the assessment rates, and that's based on the city's assessment policy on a per-foot basis, the street reconstruction rate was 87.75 per foot. Sanitary sewer main reconstruction, it's been identified at $20.75 per foot. Sanitary sewer services are $720 each. Water main reconstruction, $27.50 per foot. Water services, one-inch water services, $910 each. Water services that are six inches in diameter are $2,610 each. The storm sewer, $18.25 a foot, and then the mill and overlay portion, $58.50 per foot. Overall, the total amount to be assessed is $2,393,864.85. When you compare that to the overall total project cost of approximately 9.2 million, that indicates that approximately 26% of the overall project is being assessed. The assessment term and rates, the assessment term has been identified and noticed at 15 years at a rate of 5.1%. And essentially, that breaks down to an estimated annual payment of $97 per $1,000 in assessment. Assessment payment policy does provide for the opportunity for a partial prepayment or the entire assessment amount to be paid before October 31st of this year, next year. And the amount that remains unpaid after October 31st will be put on the property taxes, and the first half of taxes, as we know, are due May 15th, and then the second half payment is due October 15th. And there are partial prepayments next year that are allowed, but interest will accrue till the end of the year next year. So basically, prior to October 31st, that's when interest does not apply, October 31st of this year. So basically, prior to October thirty-first, that's when interest does not apply, October thirty-first of this year. Again, as I mentioned, a fifteen-year term and interest will be charged through the following, the succeeding year after, um, October thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two. With that concludes my presentation, I'll stand for any questions.
Anybody from the public that wishes to speak? If you can state your name and your address-
Sure.
Uh, so that we can record it for the record, please.
It's Tom Jones, and I'm at one two two three Litchfield Avenue Southwest. And, uh, selling a house, fixing up, getting people, and tough to sell, COVID and all that good stuff, but I wanted to, um, express my concern. I asked for the equation, and he was kind of breaking down some of the numbers, but I have a corner lot there on Litchfield Thirteenth. And they took the eighty percent of, I forget how they did it, but basically, they do the, the, uh, long end and, or, yeah, it's the front facing, and then my long side is the, the side, you know, sidewalk and everything. So I'm just kind of curious how you assess, like, all of the work, um, for that big front street is what they used for calculating the initial dollars, and then they tack down percentage based on your, your, your left side of the, my, my Thirteenth Avenue. And so to me, like, there's no sidewalk, there's no, you know, certain things not happening on that street, and so the tack, I mean, I only got the nineteen thousand dollars assessment, so it's just, it just seems very, very odd. And then when I started talking to some of the neighbors and saw some of the objections, um, it was very odd. I started to see the numbers just kind of, kind of the math guy. So I'm starting to, like, look into, get this part of it and what he just described, but then how that translates to a person, you know, a person's property. It seemed, uh, I had, like I said, the assessment based on the largest street and the more, most complex restructuring. I'm in the restructuring zone, I'm not in the, um, surface, whatever they call it. And then so that gets applied to the other side, and I'm sitting at like nineteen grand, which is pretty crazy. So I just wanted to object to the, uh, to the assessment as it calculated and at least figure out, you know, what the detail really should be and what's fair. It just, it doesn't seem very reasonable. Not all four paid assessments I did, if you guys keep the city up to date, this is my first time, but this one seemed very odd, very odd. Just wanted to get it on record, seeing that, and, uh, yeah, we're taking it from here, I guess. Thank you.
Jared, can you explain that, please?
Mayor, Council. The property noted is a corner lot. The city's corner lot pro, or, policy indicates that the short side is assessed a hundred percent. Uh, the long side, thirty percent of the long side is assessed, so it's the short side plus thirty percent of the long. In this case, I was just trying to find the property really quickly. Okay, thank you. So in terms of, and then the assessment policy also says that beside that your sanitary sewer and water services, um, come out to, or the, in the case of a corner lot, regardless of whether it's a short side or a long side, that is the frontage that the corresponding sanitary sewer and water main assessment, uh, is calculated on. So, um, I believe in this case, the, that would be actually the long side, approximately a hundred and fifty feet. The street portion, uh, was, was smaller. So corner lot policy, assess the short side plus thirty percent of the long. The sanitary sewer and water services are assessed based on the side of, or, on the street side that they come out to. So regardless of whether that's the short or the long, that's the current policy. Uh, no assessments have been identified for water and sewer that has not been replaced. No, I don't believe that's correct. That would be, um, at a future date when that project happens on that side of the street. So if there's not an improvement in front of the property, the property is not assessed for the improvement at that time. It would be assessed at a later date when the, when the, uh, the site, side street that wasn't improved is assessed, or, uh, improved in the future. Only if both sides are construct, reconstructed.
Okay. I was just saying, if I could help clarify, the way I'm hearing it, what I'm understanding, is at this time, part of his nineteen thousand is just the assessment for Litchfield Avenue reconstruction because that is, uh, that's his short side. His long side, Thirteenth Street, if that is, has any repair to it in the future, then he would be assessed thirty thousand. Thirty, I'm sorry, thirty percent. Thirty percent. Sorry, didn't mean to throw out that, yeah. But, um, so he, at this point, that nineteen thousand is just the reconstruction of Litchfield. No?
It's for the-
The water main.
Water main and sanitary sewer. Also an assessment for the water and sanitary sewer.
Oh, so are they, they're digging up Thirteenth Street as well? Wouldn't it be a street? Litchfield is an avenue, so Thirteenth is a street.
If you go to your packets-
Okay.
It should be probably changed. You have to find the Thirteenth Street Southwest and Litchfield Avenue assessment rule. It's number twenty.
You guys have a comment?
What? No, we were just, no. Do not.
It's number twenty, and then you'll see how the assessment was broken down.
I'm not sure if I, will they understand the question about Thirteenth Avenue?
There you go. That, yeah, that's where it got, that's, that's where she was asking, if it's not being done now, why is he getting assessed? And so that, I was trying to recap it.
Okay, so normally, during a public hearing, I take the public testimony. Now, council can do whatever they want tonight, um, but then the co, the council comments come after I close the public hearing. But you can do it however you guys want to do it. Doesn't matter to me.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to have it be clear. That's, I just want to be able to understand.
Anybody else wish to speak?
Darlene Donahue from Wilmer, Minnesota. My question is the assessments done on Southeast Second Street, which happens to be what my sister lives on that street. My assessment was like thirty-three percent more than hers by footage. That just seems like an incredible difference. What's my address? Fifteen hundred Southwest Sixth Street. I mean, that's a significant difference to me. Just being across town, so to speak. That's a lot of it's assessment difference. So I just question how-
The bid for Second Street was like two years ago.
So it went up thirty-three to forty percent?
Cost had gone up quite a bit.
That's a lot. Cause yeah, I got assessed twenty thousand dollars for my property, and it just seemed like, whoa. Especially, like I say, it's footage-wise. Yeah, like I say, she's thirty-three to forty percent less, and, and they're getting sidewalks, which we aren't getting. Supposedly, I'm not, I wasn't charged for the water piece of it because my water comes in on the north side of my property. So just putting it out there, it just seems really high.
Anybody else who wishes to speak?
Mayor and members of the council, before I start, I wanted to thank you again for opening this meeting. Uh, my emotions may have got a little charged when I opened this, so I apologize if I said any-
We need your name and address.
Adam Almarson, eight sixteen, Sixty-Five Southwest. Um, I have nothing personal against any of you, it's any of yours to be argued against. Uh, so I said most of what I needed to say at the last one's meeting, so I'm just going to share some things that's not a possibility regarding the council's discussion. Before discussion started, Mayor Colvin stated that for four twenty-nine, you have to assess a minimum of twenty percent. Here's what it actually says, section four twenty-nine, point oh nine. An election shall be required for bonds if less than twenty percent of the cost of the improvement to the municipality is assessed against the benefit of property. Which means that if less than twenty percent of a project is to be made for special assessments, the local government must hold a referendum on the issuance of the bonds. What wasn't mentioned is section four twenty-nine, point oh five one. The cost of any improvement or any part thereof may be assessed upon property benefited by the improvement based upon benefits received. The state defines benefit as measured by fair market value before and after improvement. I appreciate and commend the council members that admitted in the state's remit and agree that these assessment amounts didn't seem fair. I am disappointed in the few that even after rehearing the questions and concerns from everyone that had the courage to speak out against this and call out the assessment. It was unconstitutional, it didn't follow state statute, still try to keep the original assessment up. For those that didn't acquit in appeal, in the age of record inflation, this extra hundred dollars a month is not going to come easy for a lot of families. To punish these households for poorly executed investment of public infrastructure, it's just that. I have become used to unfairness, most of the time it comes from big corporations or politicians in Washington. But when it comes through your own community, it feels different, it hurts. At last one's meeting, Mayor Colvin mentioned that for the past five years, this year concerns the council about the increased value of the property. Then why are we still being assessed based on a percentage of the project that conflicts the state statute? Because we've found a way with it, they've enhanced the proper procedure. I have learned a lot over the past month, and I hope the council has to. Okay, now that I got the parts of it out of the way, I'd like to talk about my property specifically and that it was received. My section of the road was really in good shape. I can't even remember that there were any cracks or, um, per, per, or undamaged, no roof was smooth. I would say it was like an eight out of ten. Now, most of the other roads in the area are probably at like a five out of ten or less. But now assuming the roads at ten out of ten, when it's completed, I would have benefited two points. Not sure how much hundred thousand dollars, but that's essentially what it is. In regards to the water and sewer lines, I had city water before and will still have city water after. I had the city sewer before and will have city water after. And for the storm sewer, my house and road is at the top of the hill. We never had any flooding, my house doesn't even have a sun pump, and I've had no problems. My property will receive little to no benefit for utility replacements. We already are paying monthly costs and fees to use these items. The lower code of ordinance says, section sixteen dash one fifty-eight, says that these service charges are made to offset the cost of operation maintenance, including replacement. So I would be charged in addition to these requirements.
Anybody else wish to speak? Your name and, and address, please.
My name is Tom Anderson. I live at seventeen oh nine Sixth Street Southwest. There was a letter sent on behalf of the city council containing the notice of assessments, and it refers to statute four twenty-nine dash zero sixty-one. There are some further things that I would like to point out about that statute that are either neglected or overlooked or hopefully not ignored. The part, in, in part, uh, four, uh, zero sixty-one reads, "Thereupon the clerk, with the assistance of the engineer or other qualified persons, selected by the council, shall calculate the proper amount to be specially assessed for the improvement against any assessable lot, piece, parcel of land without regard to cash valuation, in accordance with the provisions of section four two nine dash zero five one." That last part of the sentence is key here. If we go to four twenty-nine dash zero five one, the first sentence on that is, "The cost of any improvement or anything there, or any part thereof may be assessed upon the property benefited by the improvement based upon the benefits received." As was mentioned before, it's the increased price of the, of the land itself benefiting from the project. There's a House research paper, a special assessments and overview that was put out by Andrew Biggerstaff and Deborah Dyson. Now, these are legislative analysts for the Minnesota House of Representatives. Reads as follows, and I quote, "The special assessment cannot exceed the amount by which the property benefits from the improvement. The amount the property benefits from the improvement, called a special benefit, is the measure of the increase in the market value of the land due to the improvement. The assessment must be uniformly applied to the same class of property. A local improvement may benefit properties that are not abutting the improvement, and those properties may also be assessed." The part in there, of course, is the fair market value of the, of the property improvement, the benefit. There's another excerpt that I would like to read from the League of Minnesota Cities. This is a special assessment toolkit, is what it's called, and this publication is put out by the Minnesota, uh, League of Cities specifically for advice for city councils on how to properly assess. Especially with the, with the regard to improvements, it can be difficult to demonstrate that there is an increase in market value as a result of resurfacing or reconstruction, though not impossible, depending on circumstances. Because special assessments are able to, are appealable to district court, it is important that the city considers the benefits to the property as a result of the specific improvement. Councils, councils can sometimes do this by retaining a qualified licensed appraiser. At the hearings on the assessments, the council may choose to have an appraiser present a written or oral report on the increase in market value as a result of the improvement. Something that, to my knowledge, has not even been attempted, much less done. That's my own comment there. Special, reading again from this, "Special assessments that exceed the special benefit is taking of property without fair compensation and violates both the Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution and the Minnesota Constitution. Property assessed must enjoy a corresponding benefit from the local improvement. This is different, a different concept than property tax valuation." I did reach out, and, and quote on that part. I did reach out to the internet to just kind of see if there was any appraisers out there that made comments on this. I found one from Kathy Pomeroy, a real estate appraiser, and this is from out of state, but it makes my point. It says, "I am a real estate appraiser. A freshly paved street will not raise the value of a house, but a poor street, in, a street in poor condition could lower the value of a house. A street is supposed to be in good condition, just like a roof is supposed to be in good condition," and so on. So the, the value of a newly paved street, even a redone street, is negligible, according to her. I'm going to defer this to someone else later. So the question is, what is the value of the homeowner's property before and after the project is completed? I purchased my property in two thousand and twenty for a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. The proposed assessment for my property is seventeen thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars, which is slightly more than ten percent of the purchase price just two years ago. I seriously doubt that the benefit to the property is this high of an amount. Although assessing property owners by linear feet or linear foot is valid method of assigning assessments, there are limits to how much the city can assess properties to the Minnesota state statutes. The limit legally is not the percentage, not in any way the percentage, of the cost of the project, but it is determined by the- of the project, but it is determined by the increase of the market value of the homeowner's property due to the effect of the improvement. This has been upheld by many municipal courts, as well as the Minnesota Supreme Court. The proposed assessment seemed to be much higher than the benefit received, and that I believe is an understatement. The measurement of my property doesn't even agree with the assessor's roll. I'm charged a hundred and thirty-five feet, and the assessor's roll says a hundred and twenty feet. There's also some of the, of the utilities that are being purchased, put in, that never got put into my street, and they're charging them for me anyway. From a layman's point of view, before the project started, we had a road in very good condition. It was redone in two thousand and eight. It was a tree-lined street with beautiful mature trees that formed an archway over the road. Now we have a prospect of hopefully having an excellent road. However, part of the project, all of the trees on the east side of the street, all of the mature trees, were all cut down. Also, many of the trees on the east side of the street were also cut down. All the trees in the cul-de-sac on Seventeenth have been cut down. So they've all been removed, and we have, also, further north to Wilmer Avenue, many trees have been taken out. So now we have a barren street with no mature trees. The specific access, access, excuse me, the specific aspect of this project of removing all of the trees, in my opinion, has a negative effect on the value of the properties and not a benefit. Even if the trees are replaced, it would take twenty to thirty years for them to mature. I would certainly defer this matter to a qualified real estate appraiser for an evaluation of any benefit or negative effects of this project. This would create a proper and reasonable assessment for the street repairs and tree loss. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And oh, my head. I have twenty-two names on the back of the bill that I've just been representing tonight, all of which are here.
Want to submit it to the clerk?
I do.
Go ahead.
No, does his names count for everybody here for that, or does everybody else have to still speak?
I think you, as a council, can decide that. You open the meeting up.
Mayor and council, there's a question from Councilman Butterfield. If the signatures on the written document just submitted count as objections for the council to consider, and honestly, to answer that question, I would need to review the document. Both presenting a verbal objection at this hearing, or at the previous hearing three weeks ago, or submitting an objection in writing are both valid methods of objecting.
Mr. Anderson, when you obtained those signatures, under what pretense did you obtain the signatures? When you obtained the signatures, under what pretense did you obtain those signatures?
Simply because I was going to speak tonight on that subject.
And did you ask them if they were opposed to the subject matter that you were presenting?
Yes, the subject, yes.
Okay. Not right now. City attorneys are reviewing the document.
Mayor, members of the council, the document appears to be a written version of what was just addressed to the council, more or less. I can't vouch for it word for word, and it's signed by a number of people on the back. We would need to review the assessment roll, compare addresses, if it, given the nature of the objection communicated, if they are property owners on the assessed streets, these would likely qualify as written objections to the assessment that the council would need to address.
And I got one more thing. My name's on that list, too. My name's on that list, too. So how do I proceed with me being on the council and objecting underneath the four twenty-nine that this is too high?
At such time as the council rules on your objection specifically, the council would, or, excuse me, you would need to abstain from participating in that discussion, and obviously from voting on whatever the motion is the council entertains to address your objection.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Jennifer Deering. I need to practice my...
Here, he'll help you. It might have gotten shut off by accident.
Testing? I feel like I can kind of... My name is Jennifer Deering. I'm here with my husband Douglas. We live at five 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 Seventeenth Avenue Southwest. We are a cul-de-sac off of Sixth Street, so we're part of that project. We've prepared a letter for the city, and I'll share a copy with that when I'm done, and I'll just read, read that now. The purpose of our attendance is to formally submit our objection to the proposed assessment associated with our property located at five 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 Seventeenth Avenue Southwest. Our property is on a cul-de-sac that is part of the Sixth Street project. The special assessment against our property is proposed to be fifteen thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars, as stated in the letter we received dated July twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. We believe this amount is excessive and does not align with the linear footage of our property that is street-facing, and does not seem to equal the amount for which our property will, value will increase post-project. The current project also eliminated many mature trees that have provided a canopy over the entire cul-de-sac, as well as up and down Sixth Street, changing the look and feel of the entire neighborhood. Whatever method the city used to establish the amount of our assessment, the true measure of benefit is the increase in market value of the property due to the improvement. A special assessment that exceeds the special benefit to the property is considered to be the taking of property without fair compensation and violates the Fourteenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution and the Minnesota Constitution. Additionally, we were previously assessed as owners of the same property for a street project back in two thousand and eight, which we paid for in full. The curb and gutter and resurfaced street from that project was still in excellent condition, but has since been removed for the current infrastructure improvements. We respectfully ask that the city review the assessment against our property and those of our neighbors, and those who are present, and share the method for which the special assessment is calculated, showing a reasonable projected benefit to our property, and how that translates to an increase in the market value. We appreciate your time, and I appreciate the fact that I was able to be here.
Thank you. Please submit your letter to the person. Anybody else who wishes to speak?
My name is Anton Swidjuski. I live on the fourteen twelve property of Sixth Street Southwest. Thank you for listening to us as we voice our concerns. I'm sure the responsibility of decisions made about an entire city wears on a person. It's appreciated that you'll still take the time to hear us. It's difficult, as a relatively new homeowner, to look at graphs and bills of materials in an attempt to decipher what each number means and how they relate to each other, how those numbers reflect in reality, with special reference to Thomas Anderson issues seventeen oh nine, with being charged for one hundred and thirty-five feet of storm sewer drain, but only fifteen feet being installed. And even more difficult to determine exactly how much control one has over a situation like this. I'm not nearly as articulate or precise in my speech as I'd prefer in matters like these, so I hope you'll understand that I speak as a layman. I hope you'll also forgive me if anything I say comes off as accusatory or curt. I appreciate the responsibility you have in the decisions that you make for us. That being said, these are my concerns. On my property, I have a sump pump, as everyone does in Wilmer, but the drainage line is underground rather than laying across the lawn, and ejects the water directly into the street outside of a clandestine hole in the side of the curb. I'm wondering if this is going to be rebuilt, and the only reason why I bring that up is, I, I believe it's near Second Street. There was a, there was an issue going on recently about a sidewalk being dug up for the reconstruction, and the city deciding that there wasn't going to be a sidewalk rebuilt. So I'm just making sure that the curb with the hole for ejecting the water from my sump pump is going to be rebuilt, and if it isn't, then my hose is going to be coming out of my lawn, it's going to create an eyesore, it's going to affect the curb appeal, if you'll pardon the pun, and it will devalue the property. I'm not sure how much it will be devalued, but it certainly would not add value, and it would definitely add, or it would create an eyesore. The fourteen twelve property has been assessed for ten thousand dollars, four hundred and twenty-two dollars. This, as I'm made to understand, is on the lower end of the amounts each property was delegated. As was mentioned in the August fifteenth meeting, and now, Minnesota law prohibits the amount of the assessment to exceed the benefit accrued to the property as a result of the improvement. I wish I had a stronger argument right now, as I haven't seen the end results of this construction, but all I know, as a layman, is that if my wife and I were to decide to move and we put our house on the market, and the person, anyone interested, would ask, "You bought this house for a hundred and forty thousand, now you've listed it for a hundred and fifty, what did you do to the house?" And I would reply to them, "They redid the street." Any reasonable person would reply, "No, I, I said, what did you do to the house?" No one would be excited to pay an extra ten thousand dollars on a house when nothing was done to the house. Anyone who would have to pay that much would, would be motivated to ask their agent to renegotiate and knock that price down. I fail to see how the benefit of my property, as a direct consequence of the construction, equates to ten thousand dollars, and ten thousand dollars. Even more so for those who are paying fifteen thousand dollars, seventeen, twenty thousand dollars. I certainly do not want to be a freeloader, but I think you should reconsider burdening the residents of this street with twenty-five percent of the bill. Two reasons. One, the obvious reason that for some people, specifically those who are living paycheck to paycheck, fifty dollars or a hundred dollars a month, might be the difference between someone putting a decent meal on the table, excuse me, or being able to pay the internet or gas bill for the month. It's not your responsibility to understand every individual's financial situation, but it's something to keep in mind. The second, the second reason, and I think the more important reason, is that I think a solid argument could be made that we are not the only people that use Sixth Street. I think you could have, once the road is reconstructed, you could have a city worker sit there for an hour and see, observe for yourself. I know from my own personal experience, whether I'm outside reading a book or throwing a ball back and forth to my friends, hardly two or three minutes go by without a car going by. Whether they're coming from Wilmer to Nineteenth, or Nineteenth to Wilmer, most of the time it's not residents of Sixth Street using, using the street. One of the main reasons, I theorize, is that Sixth Street has an outlet across Nineteenth Avenue, whereas Fifth Street and Seventh Street do not. This outlet on Sixth Street provides a back road that leads to many businesses, Dairy Queen, Thrifty White, Dunn Brothers, McMillan's, Menards, all while avoiding the hustle bustle of the First Street, the main drag. I would argue, depending on the direction from which you're coming, Sixth Street is safer, quicker, and more convenient to get to these locations. My point is that it isn't as if we live four miles out of town on some, in some gated community. The section of Sixth Street between Wilmer Avenue and Nineteenth Avenue is not used exclusively by the residents of Sixth Street, but by the residents of Wilmer. As mentioned, the U.S. inflation rate, as of yesterday, is eight point five two percent. Prices on everything, almost everything, are going up, and adding this on top of our monthly bills when the street was last assessed in two thousand and eight is going to make things more difficult for some residents on this street. I'm not exactly sure the motivation behind this assessment, and I wish I did. Maybe there was, excuse me, maybe there was a serious underlying issue with cast iron pipe in the ground, or the drains themselves were inefficient, or maybe there was another issue of which I'm unaware. But the street itself, as far as I could tell, was in decent shape. We also did not experience street flooding in the four years that I've lived on that street. There were maybe a few potholes, which could have been fixed in less than a few days at the most, but it seems a bit excessive to me to assess this street so soon after some residents just got done paying off the last one, when really this street was not in dire need of repair. Again, I want to emphasize that I understand your responsibility, and I don't want to come off as condescending, but it is the responsibility of a holder of a political office to act on behalf of the people in the city which they represent. I hope the decisions that are made regarding the Sixth Street assessment reflect the voices of the people who will ultimately pay the price. Thank you.
Thank you. Jared, can you answer his questions about the sump pump?
Certainly, Mayor. The project, all the projects, reconstruction projects, let me clarify, all the reconstruction projects, we've included provisions for sump pumps, so that has been included in the, in the project. It'll be below ground, it'll be able to connect to it. Won't be a penetration through the curb, but it'll be contained within a pipe, and it'll be taken care of.
Did you hear that?
Yes, I did.
Anybody else who wishes to speak?
Todd Larson, mayor, council.
Yep.
Todd Larson, I live at four twenty-seven Highland Road. I'm saying, I'm not against assessments. I really want you to do Highland Road, but I'm going to talk about Thirteenth Street, which is behind my property. Now, all the neighbors to my north are getting new driveways, sewer, new water. I don't get a new driveway. I don't get new sewer or water. My, my services are on Highland Road and Trot, my driveway's on Trot. I know I'm only getting a partial assessment, but I'd like to say that, two years ago, you did Ninth Street Southeast and Pleasant View, and the property owner at Ninth Street Southeast and Pleasant View Drive came to the assessment hearing at that time, two years ago. She was getting assessed for Ninth Street, but council decided to not assess him with the Ninth Street portion, instead deferred his assessments to, when they did Pleasant View Drive. So he actually got a new driveway out of the deal, but they were going to assess him when they did Pleasant View Drive. And I guess I'd just like to have the same consideration. When I get the improvements to my property, then you could assess me the entire amount.
Thank you. Just your comments.
Phil Lainstra. I have a rental at five oh fifteen oh four Sixth Street. Got a little different take on this project because this is now the fourth street assessment I've had in the last twelve years. The first one was on Becker, then Canyon High for seventy-five hundred, three years ago, seven and a half street for ninety-two hundred, and now this year, seventeen thousand on Sixth Street. I really think, I don't know if you guys are picking on me or what, but this is getting really tiring and expensive. I've got a buddy over there on the east Second Street, debacle over there, and a hundred feet over there cost nine thousand dollars. I've got a hundred feet over here, and it's seventeen thousand. So I don't know what's going on, but I sure hope that something happens, because I'm all for paying my fair share, but my fair share is getting a little expensive.
Anybody else who wishes to speak?
Sam Marder.
That's on. Yep, you're good.
Sam Marder, five oh one Seventeenth Avenue Southwest. Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I, on the attachments that you listed, you have your comprehensive policy, and I read through it. And after reading through it, I, there's some, there's something that I want to make sure I got clear in my mind. On section six, on life expectancy of improvements, you have a life expectancy for water mains, for sanitary sewer, for storm sewer. Then the, the next section deals with the useful application, and it talks about when assessments are put on, and also, the second paragraph talks about, if you get an assessment, just say for twenty years, you get reassessed that same, just say a street assessment, and fifteen years later, you get that, a street assessment again, you get credit for those five unused years. Is that correct?
That's the way I understand the policy, correct?
Is that, okay. That, that's the way I understood the policy, too, and I just wanted to make sure that I was right in my thinking. On May seventh...
Just a minute. Mr. Marder, I'm going to have the city attorney. Mr. Motterman, I'm going to have the city attorney. I'm just the mayor. We have eight professional people.
As, yeah, Mayor Council, as stated, that is my understanding of the assessment policy as well. Correct?
Thank you, sir. On May 7, 2007, on Project 00701, I have a copy of the assessments, and in that, there was assessments done from 19th Avenue on Sixth Street, going north on Sixth Street from 19th Avenue to 17th Avenue Southwest, and then including 17th Avenue. I know we had a, we had a street reconstruction. I don't have the breakdown of what else was done, and maybe that's all that was done. But there's 14 individuals that were assessed for that, and that's only 15 years, so I feel that those rates for those 14 people could be adjusted by 25% off, because we didn't, 25% of that useful life, life usage as it states in your policy. So that's what I'm requesting, is that, go to the assessment in 2007, and those property owners on that, those assessments should have credit for the unused life of that improvement that was done to their property. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Motterman, are you speaking for those 14 individuals?
Well, I didn't ask, but I, uh...
I expected, I expected nothing less from you, Mr. Motterman. And just so you know, we had identified that as an issue already, so, we knew that that was a concern.
Hey, my name is Laverne Stoddard. I live on 517 Devil Southwest. I'm in the cul-de-sac. And we're picking out those trees in that cul-de-sac and test. They used to have beautiful tree in my front yard, shade protection from wind, storms, and everything else. But with all those trees out there now, I have nothing. My front room is great, great place on that cul-de-sac. And it's hotter than hell now with the sun, because I have no protection. I put on brand-new siding, brand-new roofing. Now we come and tear out all that stuff. That is my front above. I'm tired and dropped off through the street. Disaster and pandemic and everything we've got going on right now, people don't have extra money, and they're spending $16,000. I've got maybe 20 feet front yard on that street, and we've assessed almost $16,000 a week. That's way off. Somebody more has to be there. I don't see how anybody can afford it to move.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council Representatives. My name is Ashley Vasquez. I live at 620 Charlotte Street Southeast with my husband and young daughter. I am here to voice my disagreement and concerns with the ongoing road construction project. I was assessed at just under $16,000 for the entirety of the road construction. This is double the cost of every other person who lives on Charlotte Street. The cost is way too high to expect to be paid in full by the 31st of this year. I also cannot afford to get on the payment plan $1,000 a month. Even though it'd be put on my property taxes for the next 15 years with a 5% interest hacked on, I will still have to pay in every year besides what is automatically taken. My family is living off of just my income right now. My husband's been out of work for about three months and is struggling to find new work. This has not been easy and continues not to be. We have no wiggle room to pay for anything else at this point. Just trying to afford groceries every week is a struggle. I don't know what, if anything, can be done about the cost, but it seems very unfair and a way higher cost than I have heard of for these type of projects. I just learned three weeks ago that our sidewalk that was ripped up in order to lay the new water sewer lines is not going to be replaced. Just wondering why. It's extremely upsetting to me, and I don't feel that it's right. There are a lot of children on our street that no longer have a safe place to walk or ride their bikes, including my own daughter, who loves to do both activities. The reconstruction of the roads and laying of new utility lines are supposed to benefit the value of our property. No one is going to pay me an extra 16 grand to buy my house just because we got a new road put in. Anyone looking to buy or sell would agree that by not replacing the sidewalk that was there is not benefiting the value of the property. It is devaluing the property, in my opinion, and it should be replaced. I have also had issues with my garbage can not being returned to me twice now. I've had to contact with Central Sanitation to issue me a new one, but they made it very clear to me that if they have to replace it again, I will be the one footing the bill. It did go missing a second time, missing and/or stolen, I'm not sure. I ended up emailing back and forth with a Mitchell lease for another week or so to track it down the second time, and it was finally found and returned. I'm just praying that this week, when the garbage truck comes around, I get my garbage can back. Thank you for hearing me out on my concerns and disagreements. I hope we can find solutions to the issues addressed above. I have always loved this town and was raised here. That means something to me. This is where I want to be, but changes are needed in some of these areas. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and Council Representatives.
Anybody else that wishes to speak?
If I submitted an objection at August 15, do I need to reiterate that tonight?
You certainly could, if you'd like to.
Robert Pierschala, Lakeland Drive overlay. I don't even have an address over there, because it's not really a buildable site. It's just a very, very small lot that we have a billboard on. It's incredibly small, a lot, which, like I said, is not even possibly built on. It doesn't even have a road access to the, to Lakeland Drive. We got assessed over $3,000 for 52 linear feet, which I believe is excessive due to the benefit that I would see from this project, and, again, I just want to object to the assessment not providing additional benefit to my property. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions from anybody in the public?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm Dan Bonama, speaking on just behalf of my wife, Karen, and I. We live at 612 Southeast Charlotte Street. I do not have the final numbers, but I know, and I can't remember if it was in May, it was like 12 or $13,000 assessment on our house, and it seemed high. My wife used to be a real estate agent, and she said she's never seen anything close to that high at our price point of our house, so just, I'm logging a formal objection to the assessment in comparison to the rise in our property value. And also, as this other gentleman stated, our street is heavily used as a cut across from Trotta Avenue. People go down Charlotte, jog over, and go down Sixth Street to get over Ashways and Wilmer Avenue, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Anybody else that wishes to speak? There are a number of you here that haven't spoken, I know that, so if you're just here for the process, that's fun, but if you do wish to speak, this is your opportunity. I'll close it again. The council may reopen it, but I will close the meeting again if there's no other comments.
Mayor, Council, if I could just, for the benefit of everyone in the audience tonight, reiterate that anyone who did speak at the hearing on August 15, that's sufficient. There's no need to reiterate your objection tonight if you don't wish to. Certainly, the hearing's open. Anyone is free to address the council, but having spoken or submitted an objection at or in advance of the previous hearing is also sufficient.
Additional comments or questions from anybody in the public?
So anybody on that list that hasn't spoken yet should probably speak if they want a chance.
Go ahead. Can you pick up the mic, please?
James Slaughter.
Yeah, it's on.
1200 Southwest Sixth Street, and maybe I'd like to apply for hardship here right now. I'm a vet, and I'm disabled, and I'm pulling in about $1,500 a month, and my wife is, she's retired, and she's pulling in $1,100 a month, and frankly, we don't know it. With insurance, house, any improvements on the house, any siding, any windows? Thank you for listening to me.
Jim, make sure and talk with Judy Thompson. She's the one that will help you with that. So you, I believe you have to go to City Hall to do that. So if you go down to City Hall, and you can meet with her, and she will help you with the forms that need to be filled out.
Yeah, if you want to stop in tomorrow, sometime I can get you that application.
What Ms. Thompson said, that is, if you want to stop by City Hall tomorrow, she can help you with that application, but do it sooner rather than later. Additional comments or questions from the public?
John Bonner, 1309 Sixth Street Southwest. Like the rest, objecting to the amount of assessments we're being charged. As a residence on Sixth Street, I believe I'm one of the highest assessment values at over $21,000. And I would also like to, if possible, get in writing, the quality of my water will improve. We have a reverse osmosis system under our sink that goes through about 300 gallons before I have to change the filters, and there's brown sludge on them when I change them. So is our $4,400 worth of assessments for our water delivery going to improve that? That is all. Thank you.
Jared, can you address the water quality? I don't believe that, I believe this is just infrastructure, but does it have anything to do with water quality?
Yeah, so, Mayor Council, without, I'm not sure exactly where that property is located, but usually during construction, when water main is being replaced, it definitely stirs up the system. So, and there are, there is temporary water that's incorporated into that, so that residents continue to have a water supply during the construction. So we'll certainly note the address, and I can't speak to improve water quality. That, water quality will essentially come from any treatment that the municipal utilities do. The pipes that are being installed as part of the project may provide a benefit, because they're no longer iron and they're plastic, but I'd be speculating about the water quality. I'm certain that there's, the water is definitely stirred up as part of construction, so that might be what we're, what we're seeing out there.
So, so we have been supplying potable water to all of the residents, correct?
Correct.
Additional comments or questions?
Don Heck, 1500 Southwest Sixth Street. On this project, you're saying that we gotta, we don't want to be at this, at the 31st by the, to be able to guarantee that the street is going to be completed by the 31st?
I believe at the last meeting, our engineer said that, according to everything that he's being told by the contractor, everything is on schedule. It won't be completed, because, as you know, we have the final lift to put on next year.
I understand that, but right now, according to the schedule this week, curb was supposed to be put in from 19th down to 15th. Somebody there?
I can't answer that question, Don.
I just think, you know, to pay for it and it's not done by the 31st, if it isn't completed, it's unfair to the rest.
Additional comments or questions? Race is on.
I just, we didn't get 100% clarity on whether or not putting our names on that paper would be a formal objection, but I just wanted to make sure I entered the fact that the assessment is too high. There's no way my property value is going to go up by the amount of the assessment. It's just not feasible to say that that's possible, so just wanted to make sure that we had our bases covered, so.
I believe what the city attorney said is that, in his quick overview, it appeared that that would be-
That's why I quick overview was not-
Right.
Kelly Hyde Sheppy, 1318 Sixth Street Southwest. And I also would like to object to the high assessment, and it's not going to raise my value, $10,000, $11,000. And I also have poor quality water I live across the street, and so if this project is not going to improve the quality of our water, not sure why we're getting a new street, a new water system.
Additional comments?
Tom Anderson, again, 1709 Sixth Street Southwest. I did raise some questions about the methodology that was used to determine the price that you're giving all of us. A lot of people have been objecting to the high levels and so forth, which, according to everything I've read, it shouldn't even be close to that legally. I know that you can't answer this question right now, but if, for some reason, they decide to reassess this the proper way, according to Minnesota state law, we would like to at least be notified about that situation. Thank you so much.
About what situation? How the calculation is made?
No, it already tells us how it's made. They gave us a percent.
It's already told us how they did the calculation by a percentage of the cost of the project, which, according to Minnesota state law, is illegal. It's by the benefit that's received by the increase in the property value, and I was wondering if the council does eventually do a reassessment the proper way, the legal way, that they will notify us properly that that's been done.
Mr. Anderson, I apologize. I'm not understanding your question.
Well, I know you can't answer that right now, as I said, but I want to know if the attempt is going to be made to reassess this the legal way. It's not too much to ask, I don't think, because what you're trying to do as a percentage of the cost of the project is against Minnesota state law. That's clear.
Additional comments or questions?
I'm here with my husband, William. Our names are on that list. I just wanted to formally object as well. We are, oh, I'm sorry, 1605 Sixth Street Southwest. We are a very young couple who are newly homeowners, building a family. We have three children, one on the way, and I just wanted everybody else in the fact that the pricing is extremely high, and it's hard growing a family at such a young age. We're both working. We're not living off of anything but our income, other than the fact of the construction putting a halt on our disabled daughter's therapies that I was supposed to be taking her to. The construction put that on hold, not able to even leave our house at sometimes. And also, our underground electric dog fence was damaged in the process, in our driveway and everything. Nobody's- Nobody's told us who's fixing that. And I just want to just put it out there that it is extremely hard to put that extra expense in people who are still trying to grow. Thank you.
Jerry, can you address the underground fence issue? Here's the address. So someone from the engineering staff will stop by and talk about it. If it's installed within the right-of-way, yeah, if it's in the right-of-way, then, I mean, that's city property, so, but they'll stop out and visit with you about it, so. Go ahead. Oh, okay. I thought you were, I thought you were moving up and didn't have enough space to move in. Anybody else wish to speak? Council, are you ready for me to close the meeting? Say y'all again, close the meeting. Public hearing. Council, what are your wishes? Councilmember Nelson.
Mr. Scott wanted to speak. I'll wait until he's done.
Mr. Scott?
I thought it would be a good time, Mayor Council, for just an update on where we stand in this process. The public hearing, the public comment portion of the assessment hearing having been closed again, this now comes to the council. The council's obligations under the assessment statute are to consider and actually rule on each objection that has been registered. And then obviously, the council still has the responsibility to approve the assessment rule with or without modifications the council may direct. In preparation for this meeting, staff and Mr. Vogi prepared responses and further analysis on each of the properties that had objected either verbally at the previous hearing or in writing. And was prepared, I think, to present on each of those properties to the council with recommended actions, which in some cases, excuse me, included modifications to the proposed assessment. Given the number of additional objections received tonight, both verbally and again in writing, I would suggest that it would be useful for, I don't want to speak for Mr. Vogi, but having just conferred quickly with the city administrator, I think it would be useful and helpful for staff, our office, and Mr. Vogi to have additional time to update the analysis that has been prepared to account for each of the new objections received. I think I'm still looking for guidance from staff as to what a good date to reschedule or to continue this hearing to, would be to allow for that process. It's, given the number of objections, I think that will take up quite a bit of time.
So, um, so the last time we had three weeks in between, and I know that we didn't have our preliminary findings in until the third week. So potentially, then this would put us past the thirty-one day notice. Is, so then that, would that mean that we have to redo the whole assessment process then?
No, Mayor Council. You convened the hearing within the required statutory timeframe based on the public notice that went out. You're essentially just continuing, you would, if you follow this recommendation, you would just be continuing this hearing again as long as you state the date and time to which you're continuing the hearing. And again, my understanding now is this is for the sole purpose of the city council, considering the objections that have been submitted and ultimately taking action on the proposed assessment role. So just council deliberation in the next continued meeting. If you designate the time and location of that meeting, the date, time, and location of that meeting, you would not need to give a new public notice to every member that's been proposed to be assessed on this project.
So how many more objections do we have this evening, probably?
I don't know that we have a number available, but there were several objections that were received from property owners that objected before. There were several that appeared to be new objections, and we'll need to review the written objections submitted as well. But I anticipate that list that existed coming in tonight has grown by, I won't put a number in it. It's grown.
So, um, so November, December timeframe you're thinking, or in the next year, or, what do you think? And we had seventeen, that took us three weeks.
Well, it only took us three weeks because it was a regular council meeting.
Yeah, but I mean, yeah, I mean, you were working on it.
Right. But that was just regular council schedule, so. We would, we would have probably had it done in two weeks if, if a regular's council schedule. But if you want, because our September nineteenth meeting is going to be quite heavy also, so I think that you might want to just have one special meeting in this regard and not have anything else on that. Now, that's up to the council, if they want to do it that way, but then if that's the case, I would say the September twenty-sixth or, or if they want to do it on a Tuesday night or something, at the fire hall.
Well, October thirty-first is the, is five, is five Mondays in October, you did October thirty-first, then staff could have time to get it done.
Yeah, that's the prepayment deadline. I know.
I didn't do this.
I didn't either.
I mean, I'm trying to find a solution. Does anybody have a solution? I can find all kinds of problems. I can, I can add about thirty of them to the list tonight.
I would say October tenth. Is that a holiday?
I think it is. I think that's.
Columbus Day?
Columbus Day.
It is Columbus Day, but we don't recognize Columbus Day.
Federal holiday, you can't have it. Can do October eleventh. Council, what do you want to do?
I move that we have the meeting on October eleventh.
Okay. Motion to have the meeting continued to October eleventh. And there's a second to that. So October eleventh to be the continued discussion. Councilmember Nelson?
I'm, I'm with meeting October eleventh, but are we going to be able to have some discussion on some questions that we have regarding this process?
Well, if you don't violate the open meeting law, you can't.
I don't understand what you mean. I'm asking to ask for clarity.
No, because there's a motion on the table to continue the meeting to the eleventh. That's the motion.
Can we ask some questions right now?
Certainly.
All right. Mr. Chair. Okay, so, yeah. So Sixth Street was done in two thousand eight. You weren't around with us.
Yeah, point of order, isn't there a motion on the table for a meeting continuance at another date?
I don't know what you guys are doing. You guys are just shooting from the hip. You tell me what you want to do.
Point of order, more, motion to take a, take a break, ten minute break, please.
There's a motion to take a ten minute break.
Second.
All in favor, signify by a sign aye.
Aye.
We're a poll. We're in break.
I wanted to ask about what the utilities were paying.[1198.63]
To continue the meeting until October 10th. There was a second to that motion.
October 11th.
I'm sorry, October 11th. There was a second to that motion and we were at the discussion phase and Councilmember Fagerly had a question. There was a point of order called and then there was a recess called. We went into recess, we're coming out of recess, Councilmember Fagerly followed by Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just have a couple of questions for Gary and Jared. So the tree, why, why were the trees taken down on Sixth?
The tree removal, Gary and I both reviewed those prior to and they were actually identified as part of the preliminary improvement hearing that we had numerous months ago, but at any rate they were removed because of the damage that they were causing to the curb and gutter and sidewalks. Typically when trees get overgrown in the boulevard, they'll cause the curb and gutter to heave. A lot of those trees, albeit large, were on their last leg of life too, so. There's a variety of reasons why we remove trees, but the impact to the street and the curb and gutter infrastructure is the primary one that we evaluate when we make that determination.
And they were all in the city?
Correct.
Right away, Eastwood.
Correct.
Okay, so the city will be coming back to plant trees then?
Yeah, there will be some trees reinstalled. It won't be one for one, but that won't happen until next year until all the turf. Turf is restored, we have pavement on the surface and curb and gutter and things of that nature, but yes, some trees will be replaced.
No, the public commented, well, unless the council wants to open it. Go ahead, they said come up and talk.
John Bonner again, 1309 Sixth Street Southwest. I don't want to speak on behalf of my neighbors on Sixth, but I think most of them would agree with me that I don't really think any of the curbing was damaged, it wasn't pushed up, it wasn't cracked. You know, we talked about this many times as homeowners and there was no visual indication that the, the trees were causing any damage. So if there's visual documentation of that somehow, I think most of us would appreciate it. Thank you.
And then, what was the reason that the road was redone or what was redone in '08 on Sixth? Do you know that answer, Jared?
In approximately 2008, the water main within Sixth Street for the southern portion of that project was replaced as part of a, a construction project. The water main that was replaced in '08 is not being replaced as part of this project being conducted in 2022, nor are any assessments being levied for the water main that was redone in 2008. Now, the sanitary sewer is and the storm sewer is, which was not done in 2008, and as a result of that, the street surface is impacted. So it was a water main improvement at that time.
So did they do any paving back then? Did they have to replace any?
Yeah, as the water main was replaced, there was pavement that was replaced also, yes.
For the entire stretch of the road?
Stretch of the road where the water main was replaced only.
So then our policy is we assess once or if you're assessed more than once in 20 years, it's prorated then?
Yeah, it's based on the life expectancy that one of the residents was referring to in the policy and the policy indicates that the life expectancy for roadway surfaces is 20 years. So in that case, we'll need to review those assessment rolls from 2008 or whenever that project was done to review and make sure that we determine what was assessed at that time. I'm anticipating it was water main for sure, but we'll have to review the street portion and as a result, certainly would recommend to council that that be reduced by the corresponding percentage associated with the life expectancy of 20 years.
So that's one of the reasons why we need to delay our decision. So you have time to research?
Yeah, we'll get that information and be prepared for that October meeting, for sure.
You, you, you could, by motion, you could say that you would reduce it by that calculation. I mean, you don't necessarily have to wait for it. I mean, you can, you can direct staff on what you want them to do, as long as you stay consistent.
It's in the policy, you're right.
Right, right.
Yeah, there shouldn't be any reason why.
Right.
We need a motion. I just wanted clarity, so that people out there can refresh our memory.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Nelson. I just wanted to seek clarity on what the city versus what the utility pays for. I know that we have an agreement with the utility to take care of underground, so are all, everything, it looked like from the assessments that everything was being assessed for waters, sewer, underground, everything underground. So what is the formula that the utility pays for versus what the city pays for and is that taken into account in this consideration? I, I am concerned from the number of complaints that I've heard about the value and violating the state law, and so I guess that's the other thing I'd like to hear at our next, how this plays out, because I think we've heard enough concerns about the amount of the assessment. And I personally, I know that the costs for construction have gone up, but my street was done a couple of years ago and what I've looked at is some of the other assessments are more than double from what mine was, and I'm not sure that I would agree that my house value went up at that point. And so I'm concerned, as councilmember, I feel a responsibility to make sure the city is not in legal, legal jeopardy or violating something. How are we going to look at these to determine that the value falls within what the state guidelines are? But I am most, I want also an answer on the utility portion of that and what, how did that fit into the assess, assessment calculation? I don't need it right now, but.
I can give you a few pieces of information. So you're correct, there is an agreement with the Wilmer Municipal Utilities and the city of Wilmer, and they are, are responsible for a portion of the cost, just like the city is responsible for a portion of the costs associated with the street and sanitary sewer and storm sewer. So, and I don't know if this is a clarification that you're seeking, but only a percentage of the overall total project cost is assessed, the rest of it is borne by the, by the taxpayers' exterior of the, of the project areas as well. So, but you are correct, if sewer is being replaced, it's being assessed, if water's being replaced, it's being assessed, and that's based on the, the overall cost. And the funding mechanism is either the city of Wilmer or the Wilmer Municipal Utilities associated with that. And I, second question, I mean certainly staff has some work to do with the objections that were raised and the, and responses or recommendations to those, but certainly if, from a staff perspective, if, if council is sharing the same sentiments regarding the amount, that's completely within the council's purview to direct staff to, to review a different option. So I would, I would just leave that there for you because certainly we, we want to bring you all the information that, that you're expecting at this next meeting so that it can come to a, a conclusion before, before the end of the year, so.
With that, I've had questions. We changed our assessment policy. I was not, and I'm, I'm angry with myself, I was not aware that we were now assessing both sides on residential properties and in a different formula. And so is that something that most cities do where they assess, if you're on a corner lot? I've had people say to me, why would I own a corner lot? And with what you have changed, and sometimes the, it doesn't, it didn't feel like it was fitting with what was being done. Maybe we're on the wrong side to be assessing kind of the 30 versus the other percentage. And so that in itself should not have made the, if I'm understanding correctly, the changes in our assessment policy should not have made significant changes in the amounts that we are seeing. There were some tweaks to the policy, but it also opened up the latitude of the city to do that. What I'm hearing is more a concern about the calculations themselves, and I don't know how, you know, is there a revision of the calculations that we should be considering? We're trying to grow our housing in, in Wilmer and if we are, have people so upset about assessments, I think we need to recognize that maybe we have to come up with a different formula or a different process.
I think if you take a look at how we assessed in the past, people got together and said, okay, we're going to assess this much. Now we used a true formula, put the numbers into a formula, that formula said this is the number, and that is what happened. So, so what happened this year is that we accurately followed the policy. That's what we did this year. In the past, we didn't.
But it, it also felt like in the past, we were taking into consideration that we couldn't do more than 20% or whatever the figure is in our assessments, you know, with that. So I, I'm just concerned what we changed and whether we, you know, you look at the continuation, can we afford to do this next year? Had people already say, don't do my street because I can't afford to pay the assessment, just let me drive on it. That's not what we need either because we're behind on our streets to do that, but I, listening, I, I'm not sure that what we've come up with is a fair assessment.
Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Plomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bogie, is it, is it a fair assumption to, to state that cost of construction per lineal foot in 2022 is higher than cost of construction per lineal foot in years previous?
Absolutely.
Okay, so is it a possible assertion or assumption to state that we may be experiencing kind of a phenomenon where even if we were using the same type of formula as before, if, if all of a sudden there's a sharp increase in construction costs, you would see a somewhat exponential increase in assessment costs relative to what they had been before? Is that a fair assertion?
Yeah, they would definitely be impacted by that.
And so, well, I guess then just my own personal statement would be, I guess, I believe that's what we're, that's what we're dealing with here as a, as a, not only a body, but as a community, because we're going to be dealing with this, we're feeling this pinch, whereas, you know, a lot of people are, and I would do the same thing too, we're taking a look at what assessed costs were in the past, because everything's relative, right? So we're taking a look at what our assessments were in years past and the dollars, and we go, this is, this is going, this is double the cost. Well, we may not have changed the formula, we may not have tweaked the formula to say, let's charge them double what we charged them before. That's not what happened, correct?
That is definitely not what happened.
But when costs skyrocket exponentially, but the formula is still relatively the same and you can follow the same formula, but you're going to have an exponential rise in cost. So I guess in my mind, and I'm not going to put it on the shoulders of anybody else, but in my mind, how do we deal with this? Do we, are these construction projects, if this moment in time is a, is a, is a blip in the inflationary radar, so to speak, do these residents bear the responsibility of, of the, footing the cost of the inflation in an inflationary economy? And if things do level out, then future projects, the, the rise won't be as great or the change won't be relatively as substantial. I guess that's what I'm wrestling with is if this is what we're dealing with as a community, I don't think it's going away, and I don't know that it's necessary, necessarily right that one particular subset of projects bears the cost of that compared to other projects in other years or in years to come. So the question I'm left with is if we're going to do something about it, how do we do that? What do we do and how do we do it? Because I don't, I don't think there's a single person here, and I'm also speaking at liberty, I don't think there's a single person here that wants anybody to pay the, you know, when they're looking at these bills going, you know, the last assessment that I had for the project was half of what this one, I don't think anybody here is happy about that. We don't like the, what this is costing. I don't like what this is costing. My street could be next year. Our, our engineering department, they don't like what it costs, the public works, they don't like what it costs. Nobody here is happy about this. But the question is what to do about it and does it fall on these people and everybody else who has, who has to actually pay for a portion of it? Does it fall on them? If so, then that's the decision that's made. If not, what and, and what are we going to do about it and how? And with that, I guess that'll rest my case.
Councilmember Rossk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of questions and I'll start with the ones that I think might actually have answers before I get to a similar point to what Councilmember Plomon just made, I think. A member of the public had asked a question about a sidewalk on Charlotte. Is that, it's not coming back apparently and, and why?
Yeah, I don't, I want to have those plans with me so I look and know exactly what I'm talking about before I say something that is incorrect, so.
Okay. Will you make sure you get back with them though when you do have that?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you for that. And then my other question is, I think the last time we had this hearing and tonight, there were quite a few people who raised objections based on hardship. I'm, I'm curious, just for my understanding and perhaps for theirs as well, it sounds like there's, there is an application process to be, to be filed with the clerk. Madam Clerk, how many applications have been filed in this, this season of assessments?
As of today, I have just one.
Okay.
And that, the hardship, it's, it's based on income.
But we've, we have heard from the public more than just one for sure, so it'd be good for them to, to follow up with you as early as tomorrow.
Yes.
It's also, it's also based on age and veteran status.
Thank you. And then I'll echo just kind of, I think I'm at a similar place where Councilmember Plomon is, wondering where do we go from here? I don't think anyone's going to see assessments like we did back in 2018 or 2019. The members of the community, they got assessed back then, should probably consider themselves lucky, I guess. So I'm wondering where we go from here and if the, the October 11th date closes options for us? Are we looking at deadlines? And I don't know, maybe, maybe Ms. Valiant could speak to this, are we, I mean, if we're going to be changing assessments in, in general and becoming a city that doesn't do assessments, but rather is just going to be raising property taxes for every citizen of Wilmer, are there deadlines for that process? Where are we at?
If we're going to go to the process of not having special assessments anymore, then for the 2023 budget, we have to make sure that our preliminary budget is set high enough for that, and that deadline then falls on September 19th. And we, because once we set that budget amount, we can't go higher, we can only go lower. And the final budget then is finalized in December. So as far as not having assessments, that's what we would have to do. Now this, we, you already approved the bonding for this, so that, in that bonding resolution, there is a 20% assessment clause in there, so there has to be 20% assessments, because that's in the bonding clause. And we have that money and that's what's been paying for this, these projects.
So, so if you don't bond the 20%, you're in, you're in violation of the bond that you sold.
Yep.
So.
And then that in turn hurts your bonding rating, because you do not follow your bond, councils.
When would be the quickest the staff would be ready for us to meet? It sounded like you would be ready this month rather than October.
Well, I would leave that to Jared to think. I, I, he just came off vacation too, so. He's not going anywhere in the next three weeks.
The problem is, is that we, we received so many more objections tonight.
Yes.
And I mean, you can't just take and say, okay, well, we'll just do this. I mean, each one of them is a calculation and each one of them is, is an expense. You know, our consulting engineer isn't doing this for nothing, you know? So, or I'm pretty sure he isn't. You know, but, you know, so I mean, I mean, the clock is ticking on the dollars too. I mean, each one of these, I mean, the dollars are continuing to go up and these fees have to be paid.
Right.
I mean, and we haven't even yet talked about the litigation, you know? And, you know.
Which is part of my, my desire to move this along as quickly as we can. And I would hope, as I think you would too, Mr. Mayor, that this is the end. And I would hope, as I think you would too, Mr. Mayor, that this is the end of the public hearing. I think we've given people ample opportunity to make their objections. I appreciate that we have done that, but.
You have about 100 people you didn't hear from yet.
Right.
So I mean, you could reopen it and hear from another 100.
I understand.
So.
Another bad thing?
Nope, not at all.
Can I get an answer to my, are you unwilling to make a, try to answer my question on when you could be ready for us to meet?
So currently, councils identified October 11th. Certainly, I believe that we could be prepared to have something the last week in September.
Councilmember Nelson?
So just a general question, so on our bonding, we can't go below 20%. But did I hear you correctly that we assessed at 25%?
A citizen said that.
So based on the presentation from the 15th and then the abbreviated version today, if you do the math on the amount of the assessments versus the amount of the total project costs, we're at approximately 26%.
So my question was, what would happen? Maybe we should ask staff to take a look at if we reduce the assessments to 20%. What would that do to the questions about the valuation and how it meets the state law? And what would it look financially if we just did that and treated everyone fairly? And then took a look at what do we have to do next year?
Robert, is it defendable in court? If we just take a flat, say we're going to just assess 20%? I mean, I think we're opening up ourselves to greater liability.
Yeah, I mean, mayor, members of the council, I mean, I'm thinking through this, there's two questions. There's a question, I mean, two categories of questions. The first category is every property owner that attended the hearing or submitted written objections, you have to, as a council, rule on whether you're going to grant those objections and modify their assessment in some way, or deny the objection and assess as proposed. And then there's still a policy question facing the council for every property listed on the assessment roll, whether to approve the roll as proposed, subject to the property by property resolutions of the objections you need to make, or whether you want to direct there be modifications made to that roll. Certainly, you, as a council, could direct that the overall, you know, amounts assessed be reduced by a percentage. That would be a valid council policy direction to give.
Would that make it more difficult to defend though?
That would not make any given assessment more difficult to defend, no.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson?
I guess the concern that I have is we've heard the concern just with the amount of the assessment versus the valuation and the state guidelines. And I'm just, if we took a blanket approach and said, okay, we need to make corrections to this and we just did this, would it then fit in with the state guidelines as far as valuation?
Are you talking about assessed value?
Well, we've listened to everyone say, my property didn't go up $17,000. So if we reduced it, I don't know. I'm just curious if we're still going to have the same objections.
Can I ask councilmember Nelson, are you referring to those that have filed objections already or the citizens who have not filed objections?
I'm just saying across, across the board, we recognize that something is wrong, that we can't do our assessments this way and we treated everyone fairly and just reduced them to the amount that is in our, in our policy and our bonding requirement.
But I think Mr. Anderson's point is a point well taken. And that is, if you're going to do that, are you then going to go to the step of then hiring someone to come in and do the appraisal? As was suggested by Mr. Anderson and I believe he said 22 signatories? Are you going to do that or not? Because that's the true test.
But if I also understand that policy, that is already saying that the city should be aware of that and should have done it. So all I'm saying is how do we get out of it? Is that, am I not correct? That that was supposed to be a part of the process?
Right, right.
Yeah.
And again, I mean, I hate to bring this up, but I mean, I have brought this up in the past and this is why this is so frustrating to me.
Well, I'm frustrated by it too, but I think as far as being fair to our constituents, we have a problem and I got sure that we can do this again next year. And how do we, how do we correct this year? And if we corrected across the board, we would take steps to make sure that everyone was treated equally.
Absolutely, I cannot agree with that more. And that is the same for the people two years ago and three years ago and four years ago. That they should have been treated fairly as well. Not just this year.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Besides the specific issues we've heard, do you know how many times I've been told our streets are horrible? And I'm not talking about locals, I'm talking about visitors. I'm talking about anybody and everybody that comes into this community. Our streets are a mess. I just hope and pray we don't set this backwards. We can't set this backwards. Our roads need to be worked on, period. We've got to come up a solution. And I'm not saying we're specific concerns, I'm just saying as a community, we have got to get together and find out a way to get these roads done because they're not going to get any better, they're going to get a lot worse. I remember the Seventh Street Crossing before I got on this council. You couldn't even go across that railroad tracks without losing your front end. I went to every person I could think of in the railroad department and the council, and we got it done in two months because we worked together. And that's what we got to do. We've got to work together as a community and get this done. Yes.
Councilmember Butterfield?
From what I'm hearing, I don't think people are objecting to not paying for this. They're just objecting to the amount they're getting hit on. So I think if we come across, got everybody treated fair and got them down to a little bit more reasonable rates for people to afford, I don't think that we'll have a problem with losses if we can get this taken care of all the way across the board, treat everybody fair. Next year, we know going in, okay, we got this much money, we have this much projects, we got to look at maybe cutting one or two projects next year to do it if the prices are going to keep going up.
Additional comments or questions? I read a vote on the motion. So staff is telling us, and I don't know, Ms. Valiant, if you're in agreement, that we could be ready by the end of September. If you wanted to pick a different date, if you wanted to withdraw your motion, pick a different date, you could do that. I can't be here on the 10th, I'm going to be out of town that day. I'm sorry, the 11th, I'm gone that week. So if you wanted to move to a different time, you could, because at the end of September, I could potentially be here for that, but.
Can I speak to the motion?
Speak to the motion.
Okay. So I just, I just want to clarify that it's possible that some of the points that people have made, that the people on Southeast Second Street or the people on Southeast Ninth Street, in the years past, what they were assessed was less than what it probably should have been by the current calculation that we are now going by with Bolton and Mick, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So then, I just want to make sure everybody understands that. And like you had stated, maybe those people got lucky. Because that was the figures that were used at that time. My second question is other communities. How, how do they do it? Other than the flat rate going to every citizen and getting away from assessments, which we have discussed. But how are other communities doing this? And if it's just like next year, if it's the same calculation, the next year's road construction projects are going to be 25% or 26% or whatever it is, how it's calculated for their roads. Now us cutting back on how many roads we do isn't going to change the calculation of those roads getting done. Does that make sense? It just means we're fixing fewer roads. The people are still going to have to pay the same amount. The city overall will pay different.
Councilmember Nelson?
I'm just back to the date. I'm okay with either date, however, I think it would be helpful not to get information at 3 o'clock in the afternoon on the meeting date. And so if staff need the time, I'd rather stay with the October date to make sure that we have all of the options ready and we have time to review the information prior to the meeting. And, you know, I, I'm, it's difficult, I understand. We've got a lot of things going on, but if we need the time, take the time, let's get it done right and have the calculations done so we can, as a council, know what it is we would be proposing. For example, if we reduced it to 20%, how would that work? So.
I think the question is right. I mean, there's nine of us sitting up here, plus we have our staff that are here. And every one of them will tell you what right is. That's an individual feeling or opinion, what right is. You know, what's happened in the past is this has been brought before the council and the council has chosen whether to accept it or not accept it. This year, you chose to hold it over, reopen the meeting, and you're going to have to decide at some point what you're going to do and what right is for the body. And I think for each one sitting up here, right is different. You know, if we take a look at the true law, which has been recited to us at the last two meetings, right is having the appraisal before, having the appraisal after, and determining that value of increase. And then the right number is that increase. So that's one interpretation of right. And probably has some legal merit. I mean, I just don't want us to get here on the 10th, on the 11th. Why did you say the 10th? On the 11th, get here on the 11th and then go over all of this all over again. I mean, we've been talking about this for two hours and 15 minutes tonight. And I believe we talked about it an hour plus. Getting it right is the right thing to do, but we have to define what right is because staff prepared what they thought you wanted for tonight, which was wrong. And so staff did a lot of work for the last three weeks. But now they go back and, you know, this has been, one of my concerns is that, you know, we go to retreats and we come out and we say, you know, staff, we want you to work on this. And staff brings the project forward, staff brings the idea forward, and the council changes the direction. And as the mayor in the last eight years, that has been extremely, extremely, extremely frustrating. Because I like to think I listen, but I get very frustrated when I'm told one thing at one meeting and we go a different direction at the next meeting. And it's very frustrating as someone who's trying to provide direction and vision for a community to continually have the rug pulled out from under you. So, I mean, we need to tell staff what we want them to do tonight. And then hopefully, 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 I pray that we will hold to that if the meeting's on the 11th and not change it and have them go back and redo it. That's frustrating for staff. I mean, I sat in a meeting with staff today, you know, trying to prepare what you had asked at the last meeting to be prepared for tonight. I mean, you know, I mean, hours and hours and hours have been put into this. And, you know, like I said earlier, I mean, I can go out in the community and find all kinds of problems. That isn't, that isn't my personality.
Councilmember Plomin?
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I fully respect and understand where you're coming from with regards to what was asked of staff and whatnot. But we also have to understand and respect that a part of the process is that we show up here tonight and there is a large group of individuals here that are demanding answers from us. And so we can either make the decision to decide to listen to what they have to ask or we can decide to shut them down. But that's on us. So we could have stuck with what we asked staff to do. And I understand it may be frustrating, but I'm guessing there's a couple frustrated people out there too that are probably going to be even extra frustrated with us if we're not even willing to give them an opportunity to talk. I understand it opens up an additional can of worms, but maybe it's a can of worms that needs to be opened.
All I will say to that is I've been asking for this for years. And if this is what's going to cause it, cause the change, I'm all for it.
Well, okay, then my rebuttal to that is then let's, then let's go at it, but let's do it with a positive attitude. As opposed to, you know, as though it's problematic. Let's try to find a solution, let's try to find a fix, instead of saying what a hardship this is.
Can I comment for future? Once we get through this, this is all, I know, can worms, but for future reference, if you go with the assessment, and I know at this point that doesn't cover the whole street repair, but to me, the whole city of Wilmer and all of the residents who have this street in this tunnel at some point, so to me, it should go to the city. Starting by 1% or whatever, depending on how the problem changes every year. I don't. But you know what I mean? It's like to put it all on the first, you know, the whole of that one, that particular street pay everything. At the last.
No.
No.
No. No. No, you're not.
Councilmember Butterfield?
But getting back to what Plomin said, I received a lot of phone calls that they wanted this, people couldn't make it last time. I tried giving the city warning that they wanted this, that they thought it was still open. I thought it was still open from the last meeting. That's why I moved it forward because I knew there was going to be a lot more people here. And that's why I moved this forward to continue it so we could hear from other people. And I do apologize if it goes out of your guys' way from all the work you guys put into this, but I let the city know two or three weeks ago, this was coming up. And I think I made my point pretty clear, I was going to be bringing this up.
So you ready to vote on the motion? Motion is to hold the next meeting, continue the public hearing until the 11th of October.
Can I ask for clarification?
The assessment hearing.
Assessment.
Assessment process.
Mayor, council, continuing the assessment hearing, in this assessment hearing, the public testimony portion has been closed.
It was closed last time too, I mean, it could be reopened.
Right, I understand. Councilmember Butterfield stated how well that many people thought it was going to be open. I think we're all in agreement now, the nine of us, that we understand what we're voting on, that that part is now closed.
Does everybody understand that?
Yes.
Mayor, council, before I turn my mic off, we also need a time for the continued hearing. It's been recommended it be October 11th at 5:30 PM. And location?
5:30? Here, Kim. It'll be here at the health and services if we can.
October 11th, 5:30 PM, in this room.
Upstairs.
Oh, upstairs, I'm sorry, upstairs.
Have you been in agreement with that? Motioner? The motion that's been made in second, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next, we have the cultural assessment report presentation. Mr. Box?
You're not going to invite these people to stay?
You're not gonna invite these people to stay?
Not on.
I don't think so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pleasure to be here tonight. I'm here to report out on the workplace culture assessment that was approved back in March of 2022. I had a chance to put together an executive summary that I believe you've all received and had a chance to look at. And I will just give you a brief overview and then ask if there are any questions. I initially talked with City Administrator Valiant back in early 2022 about the possibility of doing a culture assessment, put together a brief proposal and presented to you in March. Based on your approval, we looked at dates to start the assessment process, which would include all full-time staff, management, and council members for the city, and conducted individual interviews over a period of seven weeks, through, starting in April through early part of June. And in those interviews, staff were informed that the specifics of those conversations would be shared only as themes, and that would be based on the majority of the feedback of the assessment interviews. I put together an outline of the themes for your review, and the city assessment themes are listed on the middle of page two. I do wanna note that there was many positive comments that were brought up during the process. And it's important to note that the vast majority of employees and management personnel talked about their commitment to their jobs, the support and collaboration they received from their colleagues, and that they took a great deal of pride in working for the city. In addition to that, they identified some themes and areas that they'd like to see the city focus on in the future. And those assessment themes include communication, transparency, and follow-through, leadership, and supervision. They talked about specifically at the director level, interest in established meeting process. They discussed the city council's support, change, transition, and employee engagement opportunities, interest in looking at the organizational structure. Many brought up the City Hall, excuse me, building project, problem-solving and conflict resolution. Teamwork and collaboration were another topic, as well as staffing and retention concerns. Finally, they... I identified the themes of equity and consistency, and morale, professional trust, respect, and accountability. These themes were shared with Ms. Valiant, and will be reviewed tomorrow with directors, department heads, and we'll be talking about possible ways to focus on further strengthening the workplace culture based on some of the issues that were shared. And I've offered some recommendations as options, including leadership coaching and consultation, some city staff training opportunities, city management planning and teamwork sessions. Part of that would include employee engagement, reviewing the structure of the organization and reporting expectations. Some other opportunities for improved communication, possible resolution sessions for some personnel who may have some differences in how they do their work together, and as, including employee engagement committees that might be introduced. And I also recommended that there be a follow-up process, something that could be done internally every few years as an employee engagement survey possibly. That could be done within city through potentially human resources or some other internal management. So that is the conclusion of that phase, and I will be, as I said, meeting tomorrow with directors. We'll be talking about not only the overall city results, but also specific to their department, and talking about how they might look at utilizing some of that feedback as they move forward. Are there any questions or comments?
Council, any questions or comments?
Well, I wanna thank you for coming out to Wilmer. I know you've made a number of trips out here, and I know that you... Most of your experiences have been pretty pleasant, so I think you had one snowstorm or something you had to drive in or something, if I remember correctly.
This is much preferable this time of year.
Yeah, exactly, this time of the year, right? And it was very helpful when you sat down. I know you met with the council members that chose to meet with you, and myself, and I know that that was very helpful for me and just on where our organization sits. So thank you for your work, and thank you for your assessment of our organization, so. Are you looking for any action this evening, or is it just to receive the report?
I think just to receive.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you for all your time.
And good luck tomorrow when you meet with staff. You bet, bye-bye.
Next is consider an amendment to the license agreement for the 2022 Country Music Festival. Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening. Just to introduce the item here, Studio 38 is requesting to amend the license agreement. That was presented to council a month or so ago, I believe July 18th. Attached in the packet is amendment to that agreement. Point that we wanna look at, or that was being requested, is to move the stage and fencing setup from Saturday at 10:00 a.m. to Friday at beginning. Set up at 10:00 a.m. to move that to Friday at 8:00 a.m. And I'll let Mr. Baumann, representative of Studio 38, come up and present and discuss the event. Just wanted to highlight some city action that's happening on this as well. Just for council's reference, the planning meeting tomorrow with the police department to go over final transportation needs, final steps, looking for that. Also for the park with this amendment, the park will still remain available Friday, still be accessible to the public all day Friday, and then the boat accesses will be... Remember, were being presented to be closed during this event, those will now remain open. I understood that correctly. Really, that's all I have from the city side of things. I'll let Mr. Baumann present from Studio 8. As one more thing to draw to your attention, in the packet, you received a map with the proposed, new proposed layout. Front of you this evening is a newer proposed layout of the event, so I just wanted to draw that to your attention as well. So with that, that's all I have, and I will discuss, and I will turn it over.
Thank you, Mike Baumann, Spicer. Thanks again for the opportunity to be here tonight, for your consideration of this amendment. As we've gone through the planning process of this event, it's been a little bit of a learning experience for us as well, in addition to the city for hosting such an event. So one of the things that kinda came up as we've delved deeper into this, there's a 10-person crew that's responsible for stage, sound, and lighting, and it's about a 10-hour setup for the stage. So that's why the request to come in at 8:00 a.m. on Friday. They would be finished probably around 8:00 p.m. Friday. Somebody would remain at the park overnight with the stage set up, and they resume Saturday morning. Regarding the fencing, the idea was to put up just the poles for the fencing Friday. No actual fencing will be put up until Saturday, at which point we come in and actually put up the fencing. The new map that you're looking at, we've really tried to reduce our footprint in the park, as opposed to being almost out on 71 all the way back. The closest thing you would see is basically where the stage is set up. That's where the fencing would go across the back of the stage, which would face the hill, as opposed to facing the road. And then snow fencing would go on the backside, which is still on the venue side of the pathway that goes back into the park. If you know where the big tree, I think it's a tree or a star that lights up, we're still on the roadside of that. So it allows a little bit of hill area for any patrons that wanna be in there in case there's a shade issue or just a little bit of an elevated viewing point. So that's basically where we're at with everything as we get set for this weekend. Do you have any questions that I can address? Or anything that may be in your packets or in the proposals we put forward that maybe you have questions about why we're doing it or when it came up?
Council, any questions? I'm entertaining motion. What's been made in second, additional comments or questions for Studio 38's crew? Councilmember Davis, followed by Councilmember Ask.
So is the park gonna still be closed during the event?
The park is still closed during the event simply for the fact that there are patrons that are paying for the tickets inside, so to make sure that people cannot be outside there to still watch the event.
Makes sense. And then since you're setting up Friday, is there a fee for Friday? Why not?
There isn't a one, there is not a fee, additional fee proposed in this amendment, that is up to council discretion. If you'd like to pose additional fees. For council reference, there was another event held out that I was... Reference to, it was a funeral that was set up, I believe, a year ago or so. That fee set up a tent, $150, for council reference. If you'd like to set a fee, that is up to you.
Okay. Councilmember Ask.
Mr. Box, I was wondering if you could speak to... When we approved the original agreement, there were numerous deadlines that have now come and gone. Have they all been met? Various things that we'd asked to see, different plans, making sure that license had been obtained for a variety of different vendors.
Best of my knowledge, the local license has been applied for. That was council action a few meetings ago. License agreement, original license agreement has been signed, all the fees have been paid. To the best of my knowledge, I do not... Insurance documents have been received. I believe we are waiting on the additional information.
Additional comments or questions?
Councilmember Vega. So do you have an idea how many tickets you've sold, or what kind of attendance you're expecting?
I can tell you that we're not where we want it to be at this point, but we're hoping this week is quite a pickup. You find a lot of events in this area, or later, or last-minute decisions. So our anticipation right now is gonna be in the 800 to 2,000 range. So that's what we're anticipating attendance will be, again, just in anticipation, so.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion to consider the amendment to the license agreement for the 2022 Country Music Festival. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield. O'Brien. Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Vega Lee.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next is consider a contract for interpretation services for the city of Wilmer. Mr. Walker.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yes, so, I think, as far as this was something that kinda came out of the rental housing program that we're currently running with the private approach that our rental housing inspector has been taking. We've been running into a lot more situations where we encounter residents who do not speak English, and we've encountered residents who somehow sign leases that are in English, and with landlords who are exploring that fact, and that's been a constant problem. So one of the things that our rental housing inspector has utilized, he's had like a relationship with this tenant Morales, and I think he encountered her through one of these interventions at several of the properties, and she was a housing advocate. And he's been, she was translating for him, and instead of having a formal agreement, he's just kinda talking to her, sometimes on a multiple time a week basis, sometimes every two weeks or so, but it's been going on for several months, and Miss Morales has asked our rental housing inspector if this was something that could possibly be utilized. And so, I think that is what before you, that is before you all, to formalize the interpretation services that we have been utilizing under Morales at a rate of $45 an hour, and really billing only once every quarter, every bits and minutes. And so one of the things that I looked into was the interpretation services that the police department uses, and they use it for misbacks. And one of the differences is that the rate is roughly the same, but from my understanding, they are billed at a minimum per hour basis instead of a 10-minute interaction. And so that's oftentimes just interaction that my inspector has, if she's going like a 10, 15 minutes, maybe sometimes 20 or 30, parallel arises to like an hour back and forth, back and forth. It's really just kinda in the moment, kinda talking, making sure there's an understanding of the situation. And so this is really something that has grown from the social capital of my inspector and our formalized agreement between the city for an ongoing relationship of interpretation services that are committed to best advocate for residents and, of course, our rental housing limits. So that, I think, credit over you.
Council, what are your wishes?
No, two per. Second.
What's been made in second, discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Very supportive of doing this. Is she contracting as an individual or through her employer?
As an individual, that was a distinction I wanted to make clear. She texted me about this.
Is she available for other needs for interpretation within the city?
I'm not sure. I imagine, since she's on a contracted basis, I imagine that's something that we can flesh out like in the contract. I know one of the things that she explicitly denied was translation services of documents. I believe she's got interpretation services strictly in a rental housing capacity. So it's kinda helping with interventions with that.
I just was wondering if she'd be available to assist at City Hall, because I know sometimes there are difficulties down there, and in making people also to feel welcome, et cetera, with that. I know it'd be something that would need to be set up ahead of time, but it could help both our staff and our residents.
Yeah, I think, as talked about, I know one of the recent hired was going in Spanish, so that was gonna be something that we're gonna talk about. So that would be between Miss Morales and me, that's about the difference.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Vega.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the city is gonna eat that fee then, that we pay her? Or are we charging the landlord or the owner of the property?
So that's something that we may have to look at, like when we start looking at the rental housing ordinance. But I think right now, it'll be something that the city pays for. But I think in the future, when we look at the rental housing ordinance, that may be something that we have to incorporate in the new fees associated with some of the rental housing applications, and I think with something like so. So that is one of the things that we must have got.
I would think the landlord or the owner of the property should be present when we're inspecting them. Because if the tenants are having problems with interpretation from English, how are they gonna find out what needs to be done, other than a slip that's sent to them from the city to the property owner?
So the landlords have to be present for all rental inspections, that's usually how it goes. The only time that the landlords are not present is if it is a lack of any complaints, such as black mold or rust which in a house. So those are the only times where the landlord does have to be present for our inspections. And so all the other times landlords are present.
So if they are present, what do we need an interpreter for?
So one of the issues that we run into is they will offer these contracts in English, and then there's an assumption that, one, that these people read English, two, that the landlord is, they just sign this, and they don't speak Spanish either. And so the real issue is that they're... Depending on someone who does not read or speak English, even if this person, I guess, like doesn't, even if this person speaks Spanish. So oftentimes, we're dealing with landlords who don't speak Spanish themselves, they're just signing these contracts in English, and they have to say it's clear they don't speak English. So that's why we have it. So it's not like we're running into Spanish-speaking landlords who just aren't reading properly. That's not what it is. It's clearly a... landlords who just aren't reading properly. That's not what it is. It's clearly a purposeful thing with how, how, how we're gonna go to this system. This happens specifically.
That sounds good, but we shouldn't be interpreting contracts, tenants versus landlords. It'll be just like the gro- grocery store.
Certainly, certainly. So, so, I apologize for not having, this isn't for disputes like in like their, the leases. This is for persons that are being made, complaints that are being made to the city. And so, sometimes, like, even if the tenants have a relationship with the landlord, the landlord, if they don't speak Spanish, they're just listening. And so, they're making these complaints, and we're hearing about it through this Morales, but then like the landlord's like, oh, I didn't, I didn't know about it, and all these other things. And so, what's happening is that like when there is an inspection with the inspector, the landlord, this Morales, and the tenant's present, the landlord can no longer be quiet about what's happening, or they notify or how. But, so that's one of the things that's been happening. Not necessarily interpreting leases, like who's responsible for what. It's that, hey, I've had this, I've had this thing for months, and then the landlord's like, no, 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 you told me about this two weeks ago. When there's like application that they were trying to organize, and so, these are, these are some issues that we're running into. Where we're having, like I said, landlords to be nice about it, pretend to be very avoidable about complaints that they had had, that they received, and like defer and, deferdeness and negativity in some property, and they're taking advantage of people who do not agree with you.
Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Ask.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Morales will certainly be, speak Spanish. Do we have an interpreter for members of the Somali community? Are we not seeing the problem in that community?
No, so, we've had several engagement after, several engagement, hence with them as far as meeting on the weekends, kinda their complaints. So, one of the things that we've noticed is that they oftentimes have one or multiple designated English speakers that will show up to the city, I don't know, podcast group, and they get the points across. And so, we have a pretty, we have a, pretty, we have a very good working relationship with them. I think as far as getting to them, as far as what hour, what their, what their concerns are, what we can do, I think even, our inspector, what I would say, the, the communication, and we had to pull it back a little bit, this has been causing issues, sweep them a little, a little bit. But, I think, just from how they conduct business and how they run their complaints, I think the issue is sort of the need of an interpreter. They, they able to get the points across a little bit.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion does carry. Next is consider introduction of an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property and set a public hearing for September 19th at or after 6:30 PM for clean chickens. Mr. Walker.
So, I had conversations with Eddy and Barry Morrissey, that's who's in the chicken yard. So, they've, they've identified several changes that they'd like to see in the purchase agreement. I think one of the things is, is clean chickens, I think they're gonna change their name to Happy Hall, since it's more in line with what we're doing. But I just, one of the things that I wanna iterate is that currently this property is worth $65,000. They intend to make $1.1 billion improvements, and minimum wage that we pay out there is $18 an hour, and they hope to start construction this fall, they hope to be up and running early next year, I think January and February, very exciting things upon what all happens. And so, this is the price that you guys agreed to, I guess, the price that you guys invested, and they, they are not having issue paying full price, and also the suggestion that they think about wanting to take it by both parcels, they would love to buy both parcels. So, that, just any questions that you have. But I think this is really just to set the public hearing, I really did cover it on it.
Second.
Motion made in second to introduce an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property, set a public hearing for September 19th at or after 6:30 PM. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next is considering a game time grant applicant and authorize the use of 2022 CIP funds available for playground equipment. Gary? Mr. Manzer.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Back before we've done this a few different years ago, and looking at allocate funds for 2022 Capital Improvement Plan, which is $160,000 allocated for two play units with installation, and those units would go at Hanson Park, if you're not familiar with Hanson Park. It's in the Hostel Heights area across from the college. Hostel Meadows is the nearest position there. Then Brussell Park, which is on the east side, East Fourth Street, fourth and Manhattan. So, yeah, stand up for your question.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. Councilwoman Nelson.
I was pleased to see that this is a set that's going in there. I noticed that we have put some playground equipment in where the colors don't necessarily match in the same park, and so I'm pleased to see that this is being done completely according to this. And then my second, my second question was, what is Public Works' role in having to help install these?
So, what we do is move all the old equipment, we excavate the site to a level, and a star comes in and installs the equipment, and then we come back and put down P rock, wood for concrete, board, and sidewalks accordingly, and then we put down P rock, fabric, and everything else. And the reason that you've seen some different colors going that are different is because at one time, there was a bunch of purchased, two years ago, so we were just trying to move that. There was a bunch of extra equipment purchased, so we're moving that stuff.
We're back to a plan. We're back to a plan.
Yeah, it was ordered at the end of the committee as a, or that era. But, no, no, it's one is color coordinated, it's one is, the example is that as well, happened on that thing.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Fagerly.
So, the old equipment, it'll just be removed, and we'll get rid of it, or are we gonna try to sell it on auction, or it doesn't meet standards?
So, most of it is beyond reasonable use, equipment that we're removing. If it is usable, we have pulled a few pieces, but we really don't sell it because it's not good enough for us to, for us itself. So, we usually just scrap it all.
Thank you.
Some, some stuff we have refat, like murder and stuff, we take them to Hanson, because Hanson Saturday Park, those and stuff, we would put some of that, put that brand.
Additional comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien. Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Asmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next we have consider adoption of a resolution approving the permanent utility easement with Clay and Bridgette Van Osgood. Mr. Bogey.
Good evening, Mayor, council. In your packets this evening is a resolution and a permanent easement description for the Epitopics Project, sanitary sewer and water main project. And we are recommending approval of that, that easement agreement in the amount of $5,000 to Clay and Bridgette Van Osgood.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to consider the adoption of a resolution approving the permanent utility easement with Clay and Bridgette Van Osgood. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Asmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien. Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Next we have consideration of an adoption of a resolution of ASBID budgets for the Epitopic Sanitary Sewer and Water Main Extension Project. Mr. Bogey.
Good evening, Mayor, council. As the mayor indicated, these are the ASBID budgets for the Epitopic Sanitary Sewer and Water Main Improvement Projects. You'll note that the specific funding sources have been identified at the bottom of the car. As it relates to the sanitary sewer, there is a grant associated with that project, as well as a component from the wastewater fund. The water main includes some of the ARPA dollars that council considered a few weeks ago, and identified those as a funding source, and then assessments in the amount of $530,000 from one of the, from some of the properties associated with that project. So, with that, Mayor, council, I'll pause for questions.
Counsel, what do you want to do?
Move to approve.
Motion made in second. Discussion. This is a great project, and I know you've worked really hard on this. This is a project that has been there for a number of years, and to see it getting close to being finished is, is really nice to see. I know getting the conduit underneath the railroad was not, was no small task. You worked pretty hard on getting that done, so thank you for the work on that. So, roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Asmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Consideration of job descriptions. Oh, I only got one listed on my paper.
There's two motions, one for to accept the water main extension project and one for the sanitary sewer.
Okay. So, which one did we just do?
The water main.
Water main.
Okay, the sewer.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Asmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien. Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Next is consider the approval of job descriptions. Luanne.
It just shuts off. There we go. Hi. Say, I have before you this evening a couple of job descriptions for your consideration. The first one is a position of the administrative assistant to the city administrator. The city needed to do some reorganizing and reallocate some of those administrative duties. So, that job description will be vacant indefinitely, and we've revised to a new job description, so that will be the administrative assistant for administration. So, it's not just for the city administrator, it will also be for Kyle, the operations director. So, you can see that what was, the strikeouts is from the old position, and then anything underlined is new. So, it's removing several duties. So, I'm asking for review and approval of that job description, and the second one is...
Let's take them one at a time.
Okay, sure.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the administrative assistant, administration assistant job description. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. In looking at the line-out items, I'm just curious how those line-outs are going to be reallocated in administration. Because it, it felt like to me there were some critical communication pieces in some of those, and I'm just concerned whether we're...
Is it, was there anything specific? Because some of the things that were in there were either city clerk-related or human resources-related, and so they've been reallocated to those appropriate departments.
I just see that the two of them need someone to be able to handle their administrative duties and communication. And so, just concerned, I, I can't think of a particular one. It looked like some things were being passed to human resources or passed another direction, and I was concerned if we're moving things, that would cause someone else to say, I got additional duties.
Nope, I don't, I don't believe so. I believe they were just being allocated more correctly. There were some items in that job description from previous approval that just that position no longer does. There's no supervision, there's no, some of the things that the city clerk is responsible for, they, this person was a backup for some of those things, and that won't be the case anymore. And human resources kind of applies to the next position that I want to talk to you about, so.
As far as an administrative team, if one person's gone, is there cross-training? Or, I didn't, I guess I was concerned with that, too, that there's a backup both ways for administration or for other areas.
Now, there's nobody else other than this one person that would be responsible.
There's no supervision in this position, correct?
For others, administrative assistants or reception, that person was considered a supervisor for those other positions, and they're not. And they all report to someone else. So, they all have...
So, there's changes in their job descriptions also?
Nope. It's, it's always been that way, but for some reason, the supervisory portion was included in this job description, which mostly had to do with scheduling than anything else, so.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Next we have the job description for human resources.
So, for the human resources assistant, we have, since 2019, we've had temporary person helping out part-time with the human resources functions, and she's been an integral part in what happens in HR. She handles all of the part-time seasonal hundreds of staff that descend upon us. And so, just as, as a way to formalize this, and that we need this position, would like it to continue. The job description was developed, and you see that before you, so I'm just asking for approval for that to be a regular position within the city.
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Your job description is listing it as a part-time position?
That's correct.
But somewhere I read that it was, would be a regular full-time employee.
That would be an error.
Okay. So, it is a part-time?
Twenty to 24 hours a week.
All right. And then, somewhere else I read that it was already in the budget for '22?
No, just the temporary portion of, because this position has been helping out in HR since 2019, so it's been in the budget as a temporary position. So, it'll be in the budget, if it's approved this evening, as a, in the 2023 budget as an HR assistant.
Okay. That's not what it said on the sheet, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Ask.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are we posting this position and interviewing candidates, or will the temporary employee be transitioning?
Just transitioning.
Additional comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next is consider reintroduction of an ordinance licensing and regulation THC products. Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Bringing this back to your attention after our last meeting, in the, in the packet, you can see the red line or the additional comments, additional items that have been added at the council's request. To that, I had an opportunity to sit down with police chief and police captain to kind of go over some concerns from the police department. Those are also being included for you to look at and for your consideration tonight, in the, in this introduction, I should say. So, if there's any questions on those specific items, I'd be happy to discuss or invite the police chief up as well. I'll also point out that we did, in this document as well, we did include the recommendations on the, on the violations and penalties at the last council meeting. So, those are shown in this document. Additionally, in the, in the Agenda I M report, did have an opportunity as a staff to sit down and look at what our cost may be. The licensing standpoint, bigger conservatively, roughly $2,000 license is what staff would be in. And again, that's conservatively, that's with minimal calls, that's an annual, one annual check, that's no follow-up. That's kind of in line with what we're doing with our liquor license, liquor license reporting and follow-ups with the police department. So, same approach with that, and that's how we came across this number. Again, I'll say conservatively. At this point, I'll answer any question.
Okay, so you're looking to reintroduce the ordinance and set the public hearing, you've taken into consideration the council comments, and then input from the police department?
Correct.
Counsel, what are your wishes?
Second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Next is to publish the ordinance in summary. Motion made in seconded to publish in summary. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next is consider the approval of a contract with Tyler Technology and the purchase of software. Ms. Valiant, our city administrator.
We looked at BSNA, Tyler Technologies, and Harris, which was not a complete software package that we were looking for, and Brightly. And Brightly was not a complete software package either. The only two that were were BSNA and Tyler Technologies. So in, we, in, in going through the Tyler Technologies, it's 19 modules that we would be buying and the cost of purchasing the 19 modules along with the training, onsite training and virtual training, the cost of implementation in over the next two years is about $503,000. That also includes the first year of the software annual maintenance. After that, our annual maintenance is about $150,000 per year for that. And it comes to roughly an increase of cost, about $1,100, $1,200 increase in our annual cost for what we currently have. And we were getting 10 more modules that were an increase of $1,200. Any questions?
Council, what do you wish, what are your wishes here? Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve staff's recommendation to consider the approval of contract with Tyler Technology, discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you clarify the financials? Again, what we're, what we are currently paying and then what this will cost us?
What we're currently paying is $35,000 just for financials and $26,000, $27,000 for our permitting side. And our financials are accounts payable, accounts receivable, bank reconciliation, budgeting, cash receipting, fixed assets, and general ledger. And then the permitting side is just permitting and inspections and planning. And our Tyler Technologies would give us all that plus more. We would be having contract management, we'd have fixed assets along with inventory control, IT permitting, inspections, planning, grant, project accounting, ticketing, purchase order, reporting, special assessments, and work orders.
So essentially the other, I mean, significant portion of the other cost would go away. This would replace all of that at a slight increase.
Right, with a slight increase.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if we don't need a financial figure in here? We're just approving the contract is all that's on here, but you had quoted a...
I thought, oh, you didn't, you didn't give hand on the resolution. There is a resolution and the resolution reads that it would be up to $530,000, I believe it was, for the implementation and the first year of the software. And that's up to because, like I said, it includes about $200,000 of that is training online and live, so we might not use all of that. So our cost would not be $500,000 for the complete implementation.
I would think that those figures should be in that, in our motion?
The motion is, would be, as resolution. And then the $150,000 annually.
Well, then the second question I have is, we talked about using ARPA funds to...
And that's in the motion also.
Okay, so...
Who made the motion?
Can we just redo the motion?
The motion was made by Plowman. And I think Ask seconded, Davis seconded.
I would be amicable to amending the motion to include all of that information.
My, the other question is, we can't prepay or we can only include one year in our ARPA funds or would there be room to...
No, we could, we can dedicate the whole thing for the next three years from the ARPA funds.
We can, okay. Thank you.
Can we see it?
May I have any questions?
Councilmember Butterfield.
So if we don't include everything from our ARPA funds for this, how are we going to justify spending at least $90,000 more a year for the software where our constitution really isn't going to see the benefit of it?
Well, you would be seeing the benefit because one of those benefits is a work order process that we wanted to have more transparency for our citizens to have in the software process, website, mobile applications. It also allows our planning people to be onsite and do their permitting process via electronically instead of having to write everything down and come back and transcribe and such. So I mean, we're becoming more mobile in this respect and this is what we need to move into the future. I don't know how long New Vision is going to stay around and because it's an IBM-based computer software system, dates back to 1980s, about '82, and it is not user-friendly and we need to be more user-friendly. We need to have something that new, young people are using and this would bring this capability. And if we don't, I mean, you can, yes, there's other softwares out there, but it's not, we're not getting anything what we're getting with the Tyler Technologies. Tyler Technologies is a big company. They're taking over MuniCode, they're taking, we're looking at Civic Systems and such and so they're, they're, they're the big player. So we're buying, we're buying probably right now more than what we need today, but it's what we will need in the next five years.
Is it only three years for the ARPA funds we bought?
Well, our ARPA funds has to be spent by 2026 and then after that, this will become part of our budget.
Just some comments or questions.
So we shouldn't hire any more people?
No.
We should be more efficient.
We should be able to, our staff should be capable of doing all the projects now and having it more at their fingertips than, than what we have it now. Right now, we are late, we are paper intensive, very paper intensive.
And our IT people, they'll know how to...
Yes.
Figure out if we have any problems.
Yes, yes. What the system we have now, our IT people can't do because that's IBM coding. And so they, the new vision is IBM coding. So they, they can build a bridge to, to help us with it, but to, if there's an issue with that whole software, there's nothing they can do with it.
So that $150,000 annually, that's for consulting services?
It's to, it's a cloud-based system, so we would not even have to have a server anymore. And so everything, whenever they do updates or whatever, it's updated automatically, we don't even know. So we no longer have to have these large servers at our purchasing large hardware systems also. It'll be in the cloud base, so then that's why, that gives our planning people more capability because now they can be out on the internet anywhere with data services and be able to report real time.
But it's more than just plan.
Right. And this is, and that's why this is also more, because they're hosting our system.
Thank you.
I think, I think the way you explained it to me is that this is a robust system that takes the whole city, pulls it all together and gives everybody access to it in real time.
Right, correct.
I mean, I think that was the best way to explain it to me. You know, a number of times the council will have questions about this or that or the other thing. Well, with this new system, the council will be able to actually go out and look at that.
Right.
They'll be able to say, okay, you know, this happened, where are we in the process?
They'll be able to see a work order that's out there, see what, see if it was called in.
Budgets.
Budgets, yes.
Okay, just some comments or questions. Councilmember David.
I just want to say I'm in favor of it because I think we should step into 2022 and we're kind of behind, I feel like, right now.
Just some comments or questions. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson. Aye. Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmiss.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Ask. Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Any councilmembers have any community pride announcements? I'll indicate a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Or adjourn.